Good evening. Welcome to the October 14th Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. The Board has just reconvened from closed session into open session. We will move to 4.01 where I call for a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
May I?
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. Is there any discussion about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the closed session minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The closed session minutes are approved and will be confidential. We will move to 4.02. I call for a motion to approve the personnel report.
May I?
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The personnel report is now approved. We'll move to 5.01 and 5.02. Our opening ceremony with the presentation of callers and our National Anthem. Please stand.
Presenting our nation's colors tonight are members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School, Air Force JROTC, and their personnel includes Cadet Gabrielle Bailey, Cadet Emmett King, and Cadet Noah Proud. Hickory Ridge Middle School Band, and their personnel includes Rosie Coloff, Austin Olson, Abi Lockaretti, Philip McKenzie, Alexia Dancel, Jackson Lee, Adrian Jackson, Coast Kay Hubert, Samuel Lusa, Samuel Griffin, Logan Smith, Grayson Adams, and Kaitlin Cagle. The Director of the Hickory Ridge Middle School Band Program and CCS alum is Mr. Nick Carl. Thank you.
Board members will move to 6.01 where we will adopt the agenda. I call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
May I?
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting agenda has been approved. We will move to 7.01 with our Impact Through Education Awards with Mr. Phil Farr. Welcome, Mr. Farr.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Wolf Meadow Elementary School and JM Robinson High School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative Lauren Barlow to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for our continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we continue our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to the Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the Wolf Meadow Elementary School Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Wolf Meadow is Denise Martinez Barris. Denise, please come forward with your family. Denise is an outstanding student whose kindness radiates throughout the Wolf Meadow community. It is her genuine compassion towards teachers, friends, and classmates that sets her apart and makes her a beacon of positivity. Each day, Denise is committed to doing the right thing, embodying the values we all aspire to uphold. What truly shines about Denise is her natural leadership. She approaches school with diligence, paying attention, and staying focused. Her hard work and enthusiasm make her not only a student of excellence, but also a role model for her peers. Her dedication, kindness, and leadership are truly commendable. Congratulations, Denise. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Wolf Meadow Elementary School. Holden, please come forward with your family. Holden Bang is a student who truly loves learning, is motivated, and academically curious student. He has a natural ability to focus and stay centered on his thinking as he learns in different subject areas. Holden is also a kind and friendly student. His peers respect him and see him as a positive role model, and his leadership skills are commendable and appreciated by his teachers and classmates. His positive attitude and work ethic stand out as character traits to define him as an incredible student. Congratulations, Holden. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Wolf Meadow Elementary School. Ms. Johnson, please come forward with your family. Michelle Johnson has graciously served as a teacher assistant and bus driver at Wolf Meadow for 18 years. She genuinely fulfills the role of wearing many hats. She not only serves in her TA and bus driver position, but she has also taught in an interim position for several months during the last two school years, including being an active participant in the 4th grade PLC. Everyone knows her as being one of the most kind-hearted people they have ever met. When Ms. Johnson sees an opportunity to support students or colleagues, she never hesitates and jumps right in. Congratulations, Michelle. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. Ms. Lythicum, please come forward with your family. Amanda Lythicum has proudly served as a teacher at Wolf Meadow for 17 years. Over her tenure, she has had a tremendous impact on students, families, and staff. Her caring nature and love for teaching is evident in everything she does. Recently, Ms. Lythicum has taken the lead on ensuring that Wolf Meadow's new participate global teachers have the home furnishings they need in order to help them adjust to life in America. She is full of great ideas and always works tirelessly to make sure those ideas come to fruition. Congratulations, Amanda. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Wolf Meadow Elementary School. Robinson High School. May I have the Robinson Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from JM Robinson High is Jackson Riley. Jackson, please come forward with your family. Jackson is currently a senior at JM Robinson High School who is always putting forth maximum effort to ensure that all stakeholders are set up for success. He is one of the most respectful and dedicated students at JM Robinson High School. He is actively involved with managing football and basketball, as well as a member of the Bulldogs golf team. Jackson has taken an active role in making sure that athletic programs run smoothly, working in conjunction with coaching staff and athletic director. He is also actively involved in student government at Robinson. Other notable accolades include being senior class president, school mascot, serving on the YCI leadership team, a 4.28 GPA, and a Tacos for Life employee. Jackson manages to juggle his own full plate daily while also being cognizant of ways that he is planning to help others. Jackson not only makes intentional, meaningful relationships in the educational environment, but also in the outside community. Congratulations, Jackson. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for JM Robinson. Jamarien, please come forward with your family. Jamarien is currently a senior at JM Robinson High School and working towards a life full of joy, partnership, and respect. He has a true passion for helping others, and he is always looking for ways to assist the school community. When Jamarien isn't putting forth maximum effort in the classroom with his studies, he is working consistently with our custodial crew to build his vocational and career-ready skills. His positive attitude is contagious throughout the building, and he will bring a smile to anyone who spends just minutes of their day talking to him. His resilience, dedication, and commitment to making the world a better place is why we would like to recognize Mr. Jamarien Ross as a 24-25 Impact Through Education Award recipient. Congratulations, Jamarien. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner. Ms. Wheeler, please come forward with your family. Gretchen Wheeler has willingly served as registrar at JM Robinson High School for three years. She strives to improve building relationships daily, and she is consistently looking for ways to improve system and processes that are in place. She has a unique talent for making new families feel welcome and wanted at JM Robinson, and she makes sure that stakeholders are well informed of processes put in place to make new transitions seamless. She is always willing to go the extra mile to complete needed tasks, and she seems to catch the small intricacies that are needed to be productive in the workplace. Her kindness, dedication, and patience do not go unnoticed. Congratulations, Gretchen. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for JM Robinson. Ms. Singer, please come forward with your family. Madison Singer has proudly served as a social studies teacher at JM Robinson High School for eight years. During her time serving the students and community of JM Robinson, she has also she has had an unwavering impact on students, parents, and other stakeholders. She not only produces student leaders from the classroom, but is responsible for developing and maintaining a powerhouse student government leadership team and student council that serves the school community at large. She consistently holds all students to high expectations and teaches them to be accountable for their mistakes and successes. She always has a huge smile on her face when you see her, and she always has a way to bring light to a gloomy day. Congratulations, Madison. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Robinson High. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. We will go to 7.02, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Mr. Reeves, welcome.
Good evening to you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Kapicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and watching the live stream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October. We will begin by expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn of Hillbush Ford for his tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October is Mr. Hugh Vogt, a social studies teacher at West Cabarrus High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Vogt, his family, and the West Cabarrus Administrative Team in attendance to please come forward. Mr. Vogt received multiple nominations for this award from parents, students, and grandparents in the West Cabarrus High School community. Tonight, I want to share the nomination submitted by just a few of those members of the West Cabarrus High School community. From a student, Hugh Vogt has been the best new teacher that our school has ever had. He cares about all students, not only just the ones he teaches. A student whom Mr. Vogt doesn't even teach asked him to be their academic advisor. I've witnessed him giving a student in need an article of clothing from his car. Our school won the lottery with this one. From a parent, this is the best coach my children have had. He helps to calm them when they get mad on the field and approaches problems with kindness and really wants what's best for the team. Coach Vogt even gave his own shoes to a kid I won't name who didn't have any soccer shoes but wanted to play. And finally, from a grandparent, my grandson talks nonstop about this wonderful teacher that he has, Mr. Vogt. We are thrilled to have a wonderful teacher that my grandson likes and that my grandson is excited to do work for. It's great to have a male role model for my grandson to look up to at school. Mr. Vogt, thank you for the impact you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom and beyond. Congratulations on your selection as the Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October.
and Ms. Stephanie Allman. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to you, members of the Board and Dr. Kapicki. If I could have Ms. Patricia Greenley, any special guests in attendance with her tonight to join us down front, please? This evening, we are here to honor and celebrate an extraordinary member of our auxiliary services team. This is someone who embodies the true spirit of what it means to be a hero. Sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge, the recipient of this month's Everyday Hero Award is someone who has consistently gone above and beyond, touching lives of many through the acts of kindness, dedication, and selflessness. Our honoree is not someone who seeks recognition or applause. This is someone who finds joy in making a difference each and every day, no matter how big or how small. Whether it's through volunteering countless hours, supporting those in need, inspiring others with their unwavering commitment to Cabarrus County Schools, this individual should serve as a source of strength for all of us. Their tireless efforts have not only brought positive change, but have also reminded us of the power of compassion and the impact that one person can truly make. It is with great admiration and gratitude that we present this month's Everyday Hero Award to Ms. Patricia Greenley, School Nutrition Assistant at Central Cabarrus High School. Joining me here tonight is Ms. Stephanie Allman, Director of School Nutrition for Cabarrus County Schools, and she's going to take a moment to share some words as to why Ms. Greenley was chosen as this month's recipient.
Ms. Greenley, SMP Assistant at Central Cabarrus High has been with CCS since 2021. She was nominated by her manager, Richard Smith. He described her significant contribution to the team by saying, "We faced staffing shortages for the past three years, and Patricia has been instrumental in keeping the kitchen running smoothly. She has worked tirelessly to adapt to these challenges, often staying late to ensure everything is clean and ready for the next day. Frequently, she has taken on the responsibilities of two or even three positions in a single day. Her flexibility and willingness to support new team members from other schools have been invaluable. Throughout it all, she has fostered a positive working relationship with everyone on the team.
Okay, board members, we will move to 8.01, our approval of minutes. I call for a motion to approve the open session minutes for September 9th and 16th.
May I?
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Walter. Is there any discussion about the minutes, board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The open session minutes are approved as presented. We'll move to 9.01 with the Board Chair comments. I want to just continue to let you guys know that our school systems in western North Carolina continue to recover. Some of our systems in different counties have actually lost. Some of our systems in different counties have actually lost schools. We had a board chair roundtable, just a conversation with a lot of different districts, and they continue to ask for our prayers as they continue to get kids back into schools. A lot of children are still not in schools yet, so just continue to keep those systems in your prayers. We will move to nine point zero two with superintendent comments with Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Atticock. Echoing those sentiments, I'd like to thank all the Cabarrus County School employees, teachers, faculty members, support staff, everyone that's been employed here in the Cabarrus County School System for their continued generosity in supporting our neighbors in the western half of the state that need a lot of help right now. Our community and our staff here at the Cabarrus County School System has been extraordinary and working very hard to offer as much support as we possibly can. So I just want to say, in the spirit of all the things that are wonderful in Cabarrus County, you all represent such great examples of what it means to be a community member to help others that are in need. So I really appreciate the time and the energy you've taken to make sure that we're not forgetting our folks in western Carolina. We're all citizens of this great state, and I think it just speaks highly of the people in Cabarrus County and their willingness to help others. So I thank you very much for generosity and providing such a wonderful example of compassion and care to all of our folks here in Cabarrus County. So thank you again. This week is National School Lunch Week, and I'd like to extend our heartfelt thanks to our dedicated staff and our school nutrition folks. Their hard work and commitment ensure that our students receive healthy nutritious meals every day. They continue to put their efforts forward to have a lasting impact on the schools and our community, and we truly appreciate everything that they do. And Ms. Allman, you and your staff do a fantastic job every day with our folks and our kids in the schools, and I appreciate all the efforts that you put forward in making sure that our school lunches go without a hitch every day. So thank you for that, and thank you to all of your employees. It's Hispanic Heritage Month. As we conclude Hispanic Heritage Month tomorrow, I want to take a moment to celebrate the rich culture, history, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino communities in our school district and beyond. Over the past month, schools across our district have hosted a variety of events and activities, from cultural assemblies and art displays to classroom lessons and community celebrations. They have fostered understanding, unity, and appreciation for diversity. Thank you to our teachers, staff, students, and families for making these celebrations so meaningful and engaging. Your efforts created an environment where all cultures are honored, and we look forward to continuing to embrace diversity and celebrate the unique heritage of every student throughout the year. Reminder to everyone that this Thursday, October 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., our district will host our third annual Future Fairs at the Cabarrus Arena. Along with our annual Program Choice Fair, this event also features a career fair, military recruiters, and a college fair with more than 100 colleges on site. Whether you're looking to enroll in college, enlist in a branch of the military, or become engaged right after graduation, I encourage all students to take advantage of this opportunity and engage with the professionals and gather resources that can help you shape your future success. We look forward to seeing everyone there, and again, that is Thursday, October 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And lastly, a reminder that our Program Choice applications for the 25-26 school year, they open this Thursday and they continue through December 15th, 2024. Information about the application process and all our choice programs may be found on our district website, and I apologize. Lastly, is Mr. Taylor? We had a concern about vapes in our bathrooms. Would you please come to the podium for me? I would ask all of our public, quite frankly, to talk to your children about vaping and the dangers of it and the hazards of it and the health concerns that it can cause your children. We are not immune to this problem in the Cabarrus County School System. We continue to have a vaping problem, continue to address that problem, but I'm asking parents in our community for help to talk to our students and our children and let them know the dangers of vaping and the consequences that they may face down the road. We've had some complaints about them being flushed down our toilets and some of the damages that that is causing, so I'm asking Mr. Taylor to kind of give me a report and the actual truth of what is happening, taking place. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. So I did a little research. Good evening, board, sorry. I did a little research. There are a total of 41 work orders related to issues with toilets being stopped up. Only one actually referenced vapes, and to my knowledge, there's only been three incidents where they had to pull vapes out of toilets. So whatever question I can answer for you, I'll be happy to, but I mean, it's three incidents actually involving vapes, so we pull a lot of other things out as well.
Ms. Lindsay?
So I do appreciate you coming to talk about this. This was an issue that I sent an email about. So information that I heard was about $100,000 worth of plumbing at a particular school based on vapes that had to be pulled out of the system. So that's obviously inaccurate.
Yes, ma'am.
Are these vaping situations that are happening that you are aware of, that you referenced, are they all at the same school or are they different schools?
I believe two of the incidents were at one school and one incident was at a different school.
Have we put anything in place since the incident has happened at one school two times? Have we done anything to try and mitigate the situation at that specific school?
When you say put in place, what do you explain a little further?
Well, I'm just saying, we obviously have a vaping issue at that school and then flushing them down the toilet, so I'm just wondering, what have we done? Has anything changed? Has anything?
So everyone was kind of laughing at my comment, but honestly, it's foreign objects that are not meant to go down the toilets that cause these things to stop up, but you know, these have been problems at schools the entire time I've been here. It didn't just start. But it's not excessive. Since the 31st of July, when this fiscal year started, I can't imagine we spent over $100 or $200. The most that you would spend would be for a $20 wax ring. That may be a little more information than you want, but...
No, that's fine.
Most of the schools from the late 90s forward are designed with cleanouts for us to be able to access that make it a little easier to take care of these.
Yeah, I mean, and I get that, but obviously, it was concerning when I heard that it was $100,000 worth of plumbing that had to be replaced.
So if $100,000 had been spent on that, I wouldn't know about it.
Awesome, okay. Well, thank you for coming to talk about it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
That's all, Mrs. Atticock.
Thank you.
Mr. LaGrande, could you tell us what the penalties are for students found with a vape?
So we have developed a consistent approach across our middle and high schools as far as vapes, and our vapes right now, if they, any type of vape that is brought on our campus and our students are caught in possession of it or using it, that is a five-day suspension. Any vape that is a THC vape is a 10-day suspension. So that is our approach, because we understand the dangers of it and we understand that this is something we don't want in our schools.
So the THC, when they're suspended for 10 days, is that also reported to law enforcement or do they take a report on that?
Yes, anytime we have a substance that is not legal to be on our campus, our SROs are informed and involved in those cases.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to nine point zero three with our board attorney comments with Mr. Eisenhower.
Thank you. In follow-up to the discussion at last week's board meeting, I was asked to provide an update on the current state of the law with respect to Cabarrus County Schools transgender students, specifically with respect to bathrooms. In the 2020 Grimm decision, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit held that school board's policy requiring a transgender student to use the restroom consistent with their biological gender violated Title IX. The court also found a violation of Title IX where the school system refused to update a transgender student's school records to list him as a male after he received an amended birth certificate from the state. Overall, the court determined that the board had discriminated against the transgender student on the basis of sex. As a note, in order for Grimm and related Title IX coverage to apply to a transgender student, that student typically needs to be consistently and persistently identified as a particular gender. These protections case facts would not necessarily apply to a student who had just started transitioning and/or kept changing between gender identities. Although the Grimm decision occurred in 2020 under a prior set of Title IX regulations, it is still good law throughout the Fourth Circuit, including North Carolina. As such, if the board fails to comply with the Grimm decision, they run the risk of being found in violation of Title IX, which opens up individual board members to personal liability. If immunity is not available under the facts of the case, members of the Board of Education and board employees could be personally liable for such violations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will go to 10 point zero one. This is guest speakers address the board. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair to express interest and concerns related to the official business of the Board of Education. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave additional information with our board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminent threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comment shall be viewpoint neutral. The board chair has the authority to rule the speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals that address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Our first speaker is Kristy Wallace. Welcome, Ms. Wallace.
Good evening, school board and Dr. Kapicki. My name is Kristy Wallace, and I'm the mom of a fifth grader at Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary. I would like to shine a light on an issue I was made aware of about three weeks ago. After inquiring several times about the upcoming schedule for Vex Robotics at our STEM school, I was finally informed that there were no plans to have a team for this school year because no faculty or staff member agreed to coach the team. Why hasn't this position been filled? We are a Title I STEM school. Robotics is a core activity of STEM curriculum. At this point in the school year, students should have completed a parental consent form, tried out for the team. Teams should be formed, and teams should be well on their way of building their robot designs for competition starting this fall. Once I learned of this issue, I immediately reached out to our principal. She said she was disappointed as well, but they've been unable to get anyone to agree to fill the position, citing the fact that coaching the robotics team is time-consuming, a large undertaking, and something that no faculty or staff member was willing to take on. She suggested I reach out to the school district STEM coach and Vex Robotics coordinator. I heard back from Ms. Halligan a couple days later, and while her response was pleasant, the summary was to confirm that no one was willing to fill the role. There's been no further correspondence or action from Ms. Halligan. Ladies and gentlemen, the lack of action and response on this is unacceptable. Are we really willing to shrug our shoulders and tell these students, "Too bad, so sad"? These kids attend a STEM school. They've been taught since early kindergarten about the engineering process. In case you aren't aware of this process, it involves working through problems, getting creative, and trying new approaches to solve a problem. Does it sound to you like any of this has happened with this issue? How can the school instill this process to the students day in and day out, yet not use the same process themselves when confronted with an issue? For many of the students on the robotics team, English is their second language. Coltrane Webb is a Title I school. We send our kids to this school for its STEM curriculum and the diversity of student population. Who is advocating for these students who may not have a parent who is comfortable speaking out regarding this lack of extracurricular services? Are you willing for Coltrane Webb to be the only STEM school in the school district without a robotics team? I would like to also remind you of the sacrifices these fourth and fifth graders have endured during their elementary school career. They had happier kindergarten, went to first grade virtually, spent most of second grade in math, and for their final year or years of elementary school have been upended and crammed into another smaller school that's falling apart and barely has any grasp because the entire campus is filled with mobile units. None of this is ideal, but they have gone with the flow. But this, the inability to care about the school having a robotics team, is unacceptable. And what's even worse is that no one is currently doing anything about it. Sometimes you have to get creative to solve problems. Sometimes you have to get creative to make things happen, but you have to want it. Let's turn "Too Bad, So Sad" into "Yes, We Can." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenneth Warpman. Yes, you can. Will you make sure that microphone is on too?
Everyone talks about transparency and what it is, but very few people truly want it. There's a difference in saying you want it and truly being willing to provide it. Laura, you've sat up here for several meetings now demanding transparency, asking questions and wasting time. You put on a display like you don't know why or how any of this can be happening in Cabarrus County. For months, you've come and made disrespectful comments at the commissioners' meetings, demanding transparency, attacking people's personal character, and stating that we need to tell the truth. You have accused the county commissioners of trying to tie the hands of a future board, all while you've been doing your best to undermine decisions we have to make, disrupt what we've been trying to do, and claiming it all in the name of transparency and honesty. Not only have you been purposely trying to undermine the board I sit on, but you've been undermining the board you currently sit on as well. You've purposely tried to derail long-term plans that affect parents and students, all while sitting up in that seat, quiet as can be, watching your fellow board members try to understand why Cabarrus County is being treated differently by the LGC compared to every prior year. A few meetings ago, there was a discussion by this board on ethics concerning the personal and partisan gain of your members. You were adamantly opposed to that policy. Allow me to tell this board the truth and give you the transparency that you've been wanting. The county received the public comments submitted to the LGC on September 26 at 12:24 p.m. I'd like to draw your attention to comments number three and four on your handout made by Laura Lindsay. And on the front of that page, it says, "I formally request that this board consider tabling any further action on the two remaining requests from Cabarrus County." Number three states, "As an elected school board member in Cabarrus County, I am concerned that the county board of commissioners has been reluctant to use voter-approved debt financing to support the projected $1 billion of future Cabarrus County school construction." And number four on the highlighted part says, "Tabling the two issuance requests until the new board is seated will allow this to occur and is in the best interest of the citizens of Cabarrus County." You flat-out asked for a delay in these projects until the new board takes over, knowing that the LGC won't hear anything until February. You also knew that this would push back timelines and delay construction. You then had the nerve at your last meeting to question Brian Cohen as you tried to understand what was going on. You also stated your feelings as an elected school board member of Cabarrus County. If this isn't a glaring example of trying to tie the hands of a board, then I don't know what is. It's also a glaring example of using your position for personal and partisan gain, but please, by all means, continue to come lecture us at the commissioners' meetings on ethics, transparency, and how we are trying to cripple your future plans. You say one thing, yet you do another. If you don't agree with decisions that are being made, I completely understand. That's your right to feel that way and your right to voice your displeasure, but playing politics with kids who this board made clear last meeting depend on school not only for education but for sometimes a hot meal is not okay. I'll ask you the same thing you asked at our meeting. When your board members have questions later tonight, now that they know who's been doing this, will you finally do the right thing? Will you own what you've done and let them know why? Maybe you can let the parents of Coltrane Webb know while you're at it, while you're purposely trying to keep their kids farther from home for longer than needed. You asked for transparency and you finally got it tonight. If those comments reflect how you truly feel, then say it loud, proud, and own it. Don't say it behind the scenes and act like you have no clue up here while you leave your fellow board members trying to figure it out. In act of all transparency, I left my comments that I made to the LGC on there as well for everybody to share.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Burkey. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm actually speaking on behalf of a group of people, all of Moms for Liberty members in Cabarrus County. So I might be, could I request five minutes, please? Thank you, ma'am. I'm here to address Title IX issues that have been requested by folks who are in this county. So legal counsel for some school boards have been saying that the new Title IX revisions are merely procedural and represent a minor change from prior guidance. Nothing could be further from the truth, and this is my intention to do. Nothing could be further from the truth, and this is my intention to describe some of that tonight in the time I have. First of all, student health. Our XX and XY chromosomes determine our gender and are unchangeable. To deny gender given at birth is merely to pretend. It does not change your gender. Neither does surgery nor cross-sex hormones. Daily experience also leaves no room for interpretation here. That is, roosters cannot lay eggs. Genuine gender confusion is a rare mental health issue. Okay, it does exist. Some sexual questions are a natural part of changes that occur in children going through puberty. It's reasonable to expect. But can there be anything worse than being a child who believes the lie that you may have been born in the wrong body? Yes, there is. A regulation that requires everyone around you to affirm your confusion or face punishment. This is the new Title IX. The new Title IX attempts to enforce the lie of gender confusion and leads a child down a pathway of mental and physical destruction that cannot be undone. In 2022, medical literature records that transgender youth were five times more likely to consider suicide than the average teenager, and more than 50% of youth who identify as transgender report having actually attempted suicide. Over 50%. Eventually, the use of puberty blockers and surgeries on otherwise healthy bodies completes the destruction. Who on this Board is ready to justify the benefits and risks of this policy to parents who will discover too late that they may never be grandparents? And what of the safety of other students? Recall the incident in Loudoun County, Virginia, in 2021 where a boy pretending to be a girl raped a girl in a girls' bathroom. The mixing of genders in bathrooms and other private spaces precipitates this risk in the school district. Communication with parents, are you aware that the new Title IX encourages schools to withhold information regarding gender confusion from a child or of a child from their parents? This is in violation, of course, of North Carolina statute, but we should expect the federal government is going to pursue a supremacy clause as an excuse to override state and local laws. Another aspect regarding student and staff rights, a key aspect of Title IX revision is the substitution of sex for sexual and discrimination for harassment. Why does this word "substitution" matter? This dramatically lowers the bar for activities considered harmful. As defined in the revised policy, actions such as using the wrong pronouns, i.e. not affirming, for a person who is pretending to be a different gender could be considered discrimination, but is subject to all the same penalties that harassment used to be. That is a big difference. As a consequence, if a female student expresses concern for her safety when a biological male is in her private area, such as a bathroom, she could be accused of sex discrimination. This will suppress the free speech of students and staff alike. It's unclear to me how much time I have. Okay, I'm in at 23:00. Sorry. Let's look at the legal battles. Title IX has faced legal battles left and right. It is subject to injunctions right now. The injunctions that shield school districts from federal pressure to implement Title IX revisions. The Moms for Liberty injunction is the primary in this scenario because the children of Moms for Liberty members attend many schools in Cabarrus County. Then the federal government sought to enforce portions of Title IX that were not under direct litigation of the lawsuit. However, the Supreme Court has already ruled on this in August that the elements are entwined and cannot be separated. Therefore, the injunction applies to all revisions, not just those elements that are under litigation. Another element, the infringement of free speech has also been found to be an infringement of religious expression. A Virginia teacher you may have heard recently was fired in 2018. He was earlier this month awarded over half a million dollars in settlement for a violation of his freedom to practice his religion. That is, not to lie. Okay? He was being forced to lie. The school claimed that the teacher violated their anti-discrimination policy. Sound familiar? This is the word substitution we just talked about a minute ago. That's why this is important. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lee Schuman.
Good evening. First off, there's not any one person or group trying to stop school funding. That's utterly absurd. There are people who are worried how we're doing these school fundings and why we're not prioritizing the top needs first. There are, however, many residents who are upset that their taxes have been doubled, tripled, and they want to know why, and they won't change. You would do yourselves a favor by trying to understand them as well. But instead, several of you are blaming anyone but the current county leadership. So the question is, how did we get here and why are we dealing with this? The LGC, which many of you probably didn't even know existed until July, was on a meeting in July where Cabarrus County was on the agenda. You guys have probably already seen the meeting. They were converting temporary debt to permanent debt. In that meeting, the LGC said, "We've been telling you this for two years, that no other county in the state does all of their funding this way. Some of it, not all of it." They told them it wasn't going to continue. Why was it not going to continue? That's the problem. Evidently, Cabarrus has been allowed to do temporary financing for years, unlike other counties. They've been treated differently before, not now. Now, they're actually having to do things just like every other county. So, when the question is, "Are we being treated worse than everybody else?", Mr. Floyd, we're not. The LGC actually treats people a lot worse. They take over municipalities. They take over their financial obligations. The reason for this change by the LGC is because Cabarrus County would ask for temporary debt, and then when the projects went over budget, they simply converted the temporary debt plus all the overages into permanent debt. Taxpayers never knew it, except they were getting further and further in debt. Three specific projects. The Courthouse, 2018, commissioners approved a $66 million budget. By 2020, it was $120 million. Wes Cabarrus, 2018 commissioners' budget, this is all on their website, was $70 million. That school ended up being $77 million. Our Brown McAllister, on the commissioners' approved budget from 2021, that school was $30.5 million. 2022, it went to $33. The final cost was $43.5 million. The LGC approved temporary financing for $169 million. It was actually permanent financing for $240 million. They have a problem with that. Then they see the tax increases this past year. That was probably the straw that broke the camel's back. That's on their application, every debt project. They say, "Is it going to raise taxes?" They're probably checking, "No, no, no," because the Cabarrus County leadership's telling them it's not. Then taxes double, and they look like they got egg on their face. I'd be pretty upset, too. It's embarrassing that I have to come up here and explain all of this to several Board members who simply just don't seem to get it, that there's somehow cowards out there that are hiding behind whatever. People have a right as taxpayer to send a comment into the LGC. Laura's a taxpayer. Brian's a taxpayer. Dr. Kupicki, I'm not sure if you are, Denise. We're all taxpayers. We have a right to send in a comment about that. It doesn't mean we're against school funding. It means we're against how it's being done. The management of this is the problem. And Brian, you're right, you're one of a 10-year plan. Why? Because the Cabarrus County leadership hasn't funded the maintenance of the existing schools or gone on top of the growth and provided enough new schools. The reason Northwest Cabarrus High School isn't being funded today is because Tim Louder came up here and told you that the county leadership said, "We can't fund a high school in this funding cycle, but we can do two elementary schools instead." That isn't even true. We can't do the new elementary school because we don't have final drawings. The issue here is simple. The LGC has said, "We're not going to allow you to do temporary financing anymore. You have to do permanent financing." To do permanent financing, it's just like getting a loan. Brian, you're going to work for a bank. I'm sure he understands this. When you go for permanent financing, you have to have a permit in hand, you have to have final pricing done. They're not telling you that you have to sign the general contractor's contract. They just have to have all of the bidding done. You have to know how much it's going to cost. The other thing is, we can pull a permit without getting financing. I'm not sure who's been telling you that. I'm in construction, I'm in development. We pull permits all the time without financing. It just isn't true. You guys need to understand the facts. Call the LGC. You're on a Board of Education. They'll answer your call. They'll tell you exactly what you need to know. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Turner.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't remember me, my name is Sean Turner. I'm a former school board candidate. I'm the father of two boys, one of which is a student in the Cabarrus County school system. I stood here a few years ago as a concerned father addressing hypocrisy of the select school board members when it came to muzzling my child five days a week because of ridiculous COVID mandates most of you chose to enforce, but not all of you personally practiced. My faith requires me to forgive you for that, which I have, but I have not forgotten, which I won't. As a school board candidate, a few months later, I went to bat for a large portion of this county over the gross amount of sexually explicit material in our school system's libraries. I watched this Board completely overcomplicate a common sense solution by creating countless committees and holding four-hour-long meetings where angry liberal men and women, and I spelled women W-O-M-E-N, tried to explain to me how books that contain descriptive scenes of sodomy, oral sex, and rape of children are necessary literature. Their words, not mine. Tonight, I'm standing here, not as a candidate, thank God, but again, as a concerned father. My main effort tonight is to speak to the hundreds, if not thousands, of people that reached out to me in 2022, expressing their anger and the lack of moral backbone in the Cabarrus County's education system. Why are you men? Where are you men and women? Again, W-O-M-E-N. And if you're wondering why I'm spelling it, check out the National Spelling Bee's third grade spelling of women, and then check out the definition. If it wasn't so sad, it'd be funny. Where are you men and women at that reached out to me day and night claiming to be so upset and ready for the long fight ahead to right the ship? We're now at the point where letting boys in girls' restrooms. Where are all my girl dads at? There's one in the back. That's all I see. Why is a father of two boys angrier than you right now, more willing to come up here and say the uncomfortable thing out loud? That being that this Board has continuously taken the easy way out and gone middle of the road when it comes to the moral issues and allowed this social contagion to worsen? What is so scary about just saying, "Thanks, but no thanks," when our hands are being forced towards this nonsense by Raleigh? Are you scared of losing votes? Ms. Lindsay already proved that's not a problem. I think she set records last election. What you should fear is sexual assault of our female students. Preference Loudoun County, Virginia. I learned so much in the year that I spent campaigning for the school board. God taught me a lot about myself. He showed me just what length I was willing to go to to fight for my children and those of this county. It also showed me that parents are sick and tired of this crap, and they're willing to fight. Unfortunately, apparently, they're only willing to fight until it becomes inconvenient. Until the parents of this county pry their lazy butts off the couch and pry their bloodshot eyes off social media and get active and vocal, I don't blame this Board for being lame ducks and sticking their heads in the sand on these hot topics. Who's going to challenge you? Who's going to stop you? Apparently, not the parents. On the eve of another election, I caution all of you again, Lord help you if the silent majority shows up to the polls. If that happens, most of you will be watching these meetings from the cheap seats. I'll be praying for each and every one of you, even the ones that don't agree with me. Thank you. Good night.
Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
Hey. All right. I see cowards. First off, quit smiling. Why are you smiling? All I see, the one girl that went to the bathroom and went to the office to try to have something done about it, they said they couldn't do it because of Title IX, correct? Well, there is something you can do. You could create policy that goes out to the girls that says they can use the staff bathroom. One person on this Board with a conversation told me that they can't turn away the girls from the staff bathroom. So why aren't you doing anything? My daughter, right here, sweetheart, tell these people, "Do you want a little boy to watch you pee?"
No.
No, why?
Because inappropriate.
It's inappropriate. My eight-year-old daughter knows it's inappropriate, and yet y'all sit there silent. One of you told me that your personal views don't align with the views you show to the public. You're cowards. That is not how you do it. That should show every parent in this county that you are not fit to sit on this Board, every one of you. Tell me you didn't say that this is not your job, that it should be left up to the Ethics Committee. You, I've heard you say, "It's not my job," when it came to the books being in these schools. It is your job to look over who's in charge of catching those books. You, all you do is smile. Rob, I don't have a problem with you, but this has got to stop, because I'm going to tell you, y'all come up here and talk about vaping and the dangers of vaping. If a little boy follows my daughter in that bathroom and touches her, you will have a new plethora of dangers. This is ridiculous. You're opening up opportunity for problems to happen. You either create a new bathroom for those who are confused, or you send them to the staff bathroom. It's a very simple problem. We don't change policy for tens of thousands of people to accommodate. There is no problem what people do on their personal level. That is not my business, nor your business, nor anybody's business. That is their choice. But I tell you what, I want to prove that you're all hypocrites, because each of you ladies, I want to invite your husbands, and let's go to the bathroom, and I want them to watch me watch you use the bathroom, and let's see if they get mad. Let's prove to the public the hypocrites that sit on this Board. Because I bet you, you'll get mad when I watch your wife, your husband will get mad when I watch you, your husband would feel the same as I would about my wife. Now, stand up and do something. You're so scared of losing federal funding, it's ridiculous. Every single one of you is cowards. And we keep coming up here, year after year, with the same clique. There's one woman on this Board that stands up for the people and the kids. That's a role model. Y'all should listen and pay attention, is why she gets the votes. We won't put a single Laura Lindsay sign out, and she'll get the votes. Kenny Wortman is the exact example of a man whose feelings are hurt because the right questions were asked. There, I called him out.
Okay, Board members, we'll move to 11.01 with committee reports. Are there any reports, Board members? Okay? Okay?
I want to take a minute to talk about the School Visits Committee. I know you brought this up. Sam reports on this every time, but the last week was a good example. So, people are always asking, you know, "How do you like being on the school board? What's it like being on the school board?" It's a ton of fun, as you can see. We love every second of this, and it can get really, really frustrating. There's a lot of, obviously, emotions involved in this business that are justified on every side, that are very hard to be in the middle of, and it's an extremely frustrating feeling sometimes, and it's easy to forget what we're doing. And again, I've said this all the time, nobody ever emails anyone at the school to tell them, "Hey, you're doing a good job." Just checking in. And I get frustrated when I think about what all we could accomplish, if we all rode the boat in the same direction for just a week, what we could get done. You know, last Monday was one of those days. But I have to say, on Wednesday, when we went and had our School Visit Committee visit to Hickory Ridge Elementary School, and we've had a bunch, we go all the time, we go to many, many schools, I'm just going to talk about this one in particular, it absolutely cured me of that. And I want to say that because it's important that we all go to these visits, okay? When I walked into Hickory Ridge Elementary School for our Board visit, it gave me life to go into a third-grade classroom with a BT1 that was up there teaching like a 15-year vet. It gave me absolute life to watch second graders give themselves a brain kiss and get excited and write on their tablets, better than many adults write. It gave me life to go to gym class and throw squish balls over the wall at each other and see all these kids having the time of their life, and it gave me absolute life to go into the living and learning room and make it rain $5 bills on a kid who had just finished reading a book to her classmates. And it just is like air in your lungs when you bend underwater. And the job can get very, very frustrating a lot, but I think it's very, very important that we go. And the best thing about it was getting hugs from kids and teachers thanking us for being there to see what they're actually doing. We talk a lot about what they're doing in classrooms and in schools. If you want to know what's happening in classrooms and schools, get out of the Facebook comments and get into the classrooms when we go. That's the best way to figure it out. I get sick and I get tired of people telling me what's happening when I'm in there myself and I see what's going on. And I think one of the best things that we do with these visits is Dr. Kupicki doesn't visits is Dr. Kapicki doesn't come with us, because we don't want a dog and pony show. Many of us know some of these teachers and administrators and ask them, hey, what do we really need to know? What do we really need to know that's going on in here? And they tell us, and we find problems and we get them fixed. We're at Mount Pleasant, they give us a problem, two days later Chuck Taylor's in there, and they have solved a problem that has been there for a while, that nobody even realized was there, because nobody bothered to find out. And the school visit committee, it has to be the most important thing that we do. So I say that because we make time for what matters. I see us making time for all kinds of stuff. God bless election season. We make a lot of time for ourselves during that. We have to make time for this. This is the most important thing, I think, that we do, and I'm sorry to preach about it, but it's that important to me, and I hope that everybody takes advantage of this great opportunity we have, because it will give you absolute life in your lungs. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. We'll move to 11.02, our district support plan for low-performing schools with Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Ms. Sarah Reeves. Welcome.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Dr. Kapicki. Tonight, Ms. Reeves is kind enough to join me as we share for you what will be our district support plan for those schools who have been designated as low-performing schools. Now, I certainly want to begin by saying, a designation of low performing does not define a school. Mr. Floyd just so eloquently and articulately and passionately just shared, there's so much happening in our schools every day that we should be proud of, and we're thankful for the leadership the board has shown, because without your efforts and your commitments, none of that would be possible. And we sometimes don't hear about the things to which really are truly those significant monumental events to which the board themselves shows support. Your commitment to be in schools, your commitment to connect with others, just to be an ear that listens, is powerful, because at the end of the day, that's what is meaningful for our children. At the end of the day, that is what is really going to help us be able to create the synergy to really move all of our schools towards that designation of excellence, because they're all excellent. Each and every one of them are doing things that are positive for children every single day, regardless of designations, regardless of school performance grades. And it's incumbent upon us to tell that story. It's incumbent upon us to lead when they have no voice here. So we're that voice for them. And so I thank you for always keeping that in mind, and certainly keeping that commitment, because that's one of the special things that we, as a district, define. And thank you, Dr. Kapicki, for your efforts, because that has certainly helped us be able to create this alignment, to which we're now truly able to offer those supports, not only myself, my colleague here to my right, but all these people that are here behind me that support each and every single day to say, what can we do to enhance and increase the benefits for our students? So tonight is about that. It's about being able to share, not a designation. That's how we're going to continue to rally, champion, provide resources, and support our schools, not just our schools, those schools that have students that have the greatest risk factors. And how can we align ourselves behind them to ensure that they're getting the very best that they deserve, because that's what our community asks of us. So tonight, what we'll offer is a bit of an overview as to how we, as a district, can support. I've shared some resources with you in advance of tonight's presentation, just to give you an idea of the school improvement plans, the low-performing supports that we are going to intentionally commit ourselves to throughout this year. We'll speak to those in a moment, but wanted at least share with you that that has been provided.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. As we have already shared with you, we have an intentional laser-like focus on around continuous improvement. And so our expectation is just as though we are asking our schools to have a mindset of continuous improvement, we are doing the same as a district. So as Dr. Bauer shared, when we're specifically thinking about those schools that received a designation of low-performing school status, our district goals are going to continue to support that. So when we're looking in the areas of foundational literacy, eighth grade math, and math one, we've already set the stage for this in June. And so as we are working with these specific schools, these target areas are going to help them to move off of the low-performing list, and this is something that we've launched, and it's not something in addition to. Rather, our plan is built upon the support of all of our schools.
We know these efforts are successful, because we've seen them work with our schools. We've seen schools that have previously been identified or designated as low-performing by the state of North Carolina no longer receive said designation, once these resources and supports were put in place. And so again, if you need, we need proof as a reminder that there is going to be, when we commit to something, it can be done. I would offer that that would be it. Now, there are some statutory requirements that must be met, so I certainly want to make sure that you understand as a board what those might be for us as a district, each and every year, that there would be a school that is designated or identified as low performing. First of all, the low-performing school designation, understanding what that is predicated upon and how that's defined is important. The metrics behind that are, as I mentioned, the school performance grade. If a school has a D or an F as their school performance grade, and they do not meet or they met growth, then that is a designation of low performing as defined by the state of North Carolina. Now, for us, we know that that, again, is not a reflection of the school itself, but nonetheless, it does not certainly keep us from putting some measures in place that are going to be some additional supports. The beauty behind this is that these are not additional actions on the part of the school. These are all district-led effort supports. So tonight, what we're going to share with you is what that plan would be. You see here that statutorily, once the plan is then submitted to the board for their consideration, schools would then make their plans available, such that the public has an opportunity to review, provide feedback, and ask any questions that they may have about what takes place with regards to the particular supports included in their school improvement plans. After a window in which the public has had a chance to be able to comment, you then see the last item here that says, within 30 days of receiving the plan, the local board shall then vote to reject or reprove the plan. All right, so it just gives you a sense of what are going to be the obligations that we, as a district, must commit to, and certainly those that we have to honor. Now, where these supports exist is merely a function of how we define our school improvement plans. So if you recall back last week, we had our school improvement plans presented to you. Within those, there are specific action steps and items that each school will undertake to be able to effort and leverage the gains that they've noted within their plans in order to achieve the outcomes that they so desire. This here is no additional action on the part of the school, as I mentioned. These are now district-level supports that we're going to commit to, that schools have now added to their plans. So it really is easy to be able to implement this and to put it within the existing plan. So again, each plan's NC STAR Plan, as we've mentioned before, which is the platform we use for our school improvement planning process, has what is referred to as a key indicator. Key indicator is merely a best practice, and along with that best practice, we now have specific action steps. So one of the ones in which each of our schools that have been designated as low performing by the state of North Carolina has used, as you see here, we are now going to say that the LEA promotes a school culture in which its professional collaboration is valued. To the right of that, you now see what are the specific action steps that will be implemented, and each of those items are playing out right now as we speak. Our human resources team, another integral partner in this process as well, we're going to have coaching sessions with each of the schools themselves to be able to go to the state board policy, and what that might look like from a teacher's support piece as the year plays out. We're going to have training sessions that are offered to be able to review the super evaluation process. That's merely just another observation instrument that plays out at these particular schools throughout the year, such that there is feedback, constant dialogue between administration and teachers, in an ongoing effort to build capacity of classrooms teachers, and also build upon instruction. And then you see below some additional commitments that we've outlined there.
So in addition to the human resources component, we've been intentional about having specific professional development, as well as learning walks and school visits that are tailored around these individual schools' school improvement plan goals. So we shared with you last week that we started the year with our continuous school improvement meetings, where we had the opportunity to meet with school leaders, as well as their leadership teams. We talked to them a lot about what they found in their data preliminarily when it was released, and then from there, we talked specifically around their school SMART goals. So what were they trying to achieve, and how could we provision supports at the district level to address specifically their target areas of focus for the upcoming year? For our schools that have this designation status, we are taking it one step further, where we actually have the opportunity, where we will be going out and launching intentional directed school visits with these school leaders in specific classrooms, where they want additional supports and resources deployed to better support them. So this goes beyond simply just classroom practice and instruction, which obviously, as Dr. Bauer shared, a lot of this is around school performance grades, but it also leads into coaching and supportive teachers, as well as data disaggregation protocols, and helping the schools really intentionally focus on what is their strategic action plan to help them with the school accountability model.
This gives you a sense of the timeline that we have, from the time in which the plans has been shared with the board, leading up to what it would look like to approval of the plan itself. So last, excuse me, October the 3rd, State Board of Education met to actually release their designations for the 24, 25 school year. Shortly after that, schools are then statutorily obligated to send a letter of notification home to families. All of our schools have been able to accomplish that, and they've done that communication as well. You then see that the low-performing schools, their plans were updated last Friday to reflect the resources, the supports that we just spoke of. And then tonight, the plan's being shared with you. Plans will be posted on each of their sites tomorrow. We'll have a link that we attached to each school's website that has helped, again, our communications team has been instrumental in creating an engage link for that communication, such that parents and community members can then provide any feedback or ask any questions that they may have about a particular school's plans or some of the efforts that may be taking place. And then you see there, on November the 12th, we'll be back before you to ask for your approval of this year's supports for our low-performing schools. So at that point, we'll pause for any questions.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Sandage?
Just a few. So how long can a school be low performing for?
So that designation could be, that designation could be assigned for as long as the school meets the conditions that I outlined earlier, and that's a school performance grade of D or F, in which the school did not meet or met growth.
And then when those schools are identified, and we see a school that we've put a plan in place, and it may or may not be working as effectively as we intended that it would, what do we do at that point?
What a question.
I'm just giving you an opportunity just to put it out there, what we're doing.
No, absolutely. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Well, that's working intentionally with the school administration. That's working intentionally with support staff that are in place right there, to be able to step back again, conduct yet again. This is grounded in school improvement planning. And so when we find these things that may not necessarily be having the intended outcome, that we had established or we'd hoped for, well, that's when we would then back up, read the data, review the key action steps taking place within the school, look to find other additional measures to which we haven't introduced, and be able to make sure that we're setting those realistic expectations.
What's the timeframe for that? So we've given a school, you know, three months. I'm just putting a timer. But what's the timeframe for when we identify that this may not be working, and we act accordingly?
Do you want to speak to some of the progress monitoring pieces in place?
Yeah, so we have, at a minimum, three progress monitorings in place for our schools that have this designation, and actually, the first monitoring already happened. It was already at the beginning of the, start of the school year, reviewing the accountability data, talking about the improvement planning. From there, district walkthroughs are continuing to be conducted. Obviously, monthly or bimonthly visits are also being conducted by the assistant superintendents of that level. And then in addition to that, we just actually completed our first round of benchmarking, which is something that we're really proud of in this district, because it helps us keep a pulse on making sure that students are meeting the adequate growth, based on their EVOs projections, but also making sure that no child is slipping through the cracks. So where are we seeing performance challenges? Are we noticing trends or patterns? So are we seeing something in a specific content area? Is there a certain teacher that may be struggling with the curriculum that they need additional supports with? So once that data is finalized, which we expect to get that back later this week, we will be reviewing that data, and then we are actually going out to the schools. We will be walking classrooms with the school leaders. We will be talking to them about what they saw over the course of the first quarter. We'll be talking about what we saw. We'll be reviewing that data, and then we'll be creating support plans. So what does this school need? What is the school going to commit to? What are we going to commit to in order to provision that support? And then there's follow-up checkpoints along the way. So we're not going to wait till the second round benchmarks. We'll be implementing action steps along the way and following back and forth through weekly communication as the second quarter continues.
The last question I think I have, well, I think this is the last question, about the public review. Can you walk me through or walk us through what happens in that timeframe? A lot of the times I get this idea, or people get this idea, that we're the enemy, because we don't receive information, and we don't do anything with the information that we receive. So what happens through this public process? And I promise I'm going to wrap this up. What I'm trying to understand is if that allows for people to give us suggestions as to what they feel like we can do, and then we review those suggestions and do something about it, or not? Like, what's the determining for that? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, completely. And I think it's a great question to understand exactly, where does this go, who receives it, and what then happens next. Everything you just said is accurate. Number one, first review would be questions. That would be our first line of, or, excuse me, our first action, be able to answer the questions for the community as they're presented. Number two, if there is something feedback-oriented, suggestion-oriented, or idea-oriented, that information will be given to the school themselves. So that goes back to the school principal, their administrative team, their school improvement teams, to be able to review internally. There may be measures that they can implement real-time, effective, in the moment, to be able to take those considerations into effect, and there may be some that are more long-term. So it really depends upon the nature of what's being offered, but that information is better gleaned at the school level versus the district being able to weigh in and provide real-time relevant connections. We want to make sure that schools are positioned to be able to make those decisions for their community.
And just to put this into perspective, do we often get recommendations from these public reviews? Like, do we get a thousand suggestions? Can you put a number there?
I believe last year, when we came before you at this time of the year, there were zero comments, feedbacks, questions.
So if I can put a plug in, if you have an issue that you feel you can make a recommendation to us for things that we are not doing, or things where you see we can do something differently, there is an opportunity to put a comment in to say, hey, CCS, why don't y'all take a look at this? And there's a possibility this can help you with this issue.
Feedback is welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You didn't get any comments, though, the last one. Okay. So there's, it's open, y'all.
Ms. Lindsay?
So thank you for presenting all of this. And I know that this is obviously a concern for all of us. How do we bring parents into this? So as far as the school and the low performing, what are we doing? I feel like the more parents we have involved in what's going on, the better their children are going to do, and obviously, the parents are going to be aware and can help on the back end. So anything regarding parent, you know, parental involvement in this?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, it's a great question. As you'll notice, with some of our schools and their school improvement plans, they have a community engagement piece attached to that. That is one thing that they've intentionally placed within their plans, to be able to create those opportunities for dialogue, communication, collaboration, interaction. A lot of them are going to host specific parent nights, curriculum nights to which they may be offering. They're going to look at special events to which they have. They'll have volunteer efforts that they extend out to the community. All of our school improvement teams at the school level have parent representation on them. So there are a plethora of opportunities for individuals to become engaged. And again, schools that we know that have certainly, certainly received this designation, that is an intentional effort on the part to say, we want to increase and expand our community engagement.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you also for the presentation and the attention that you're giving, giving that, because again, we want our kids to be a proficiency. We've had a school, though, this year that you laid a fire on it, and they did very, very well, and they're off that list, right? So was there certain things that we did at that school that we could replicate to some of these other schools?
It's a great question. So that's really what our model is built off of. So last year, we piloted a tiered support model with intentionality, knowing that we can't necessarily concentrate a significant amount of human resource capital to all of our schools, as much as we would love to, right? So what does that look like from a tiered or differentiated support level, just the way we would do for a student? And so we experienced a lot of success. We actually worked with that leadership team. We got feedback from that leadership team, what was helpful, what would you like to see tweaked or revised, and that's how we replicated the entire support model this year, and it's actually continuing to evolve. So we received feedback from the first round of our continuous school improvement meetings that ended in the second week in September. There were a few suggestions from our school leaders that said, hey, listen, it would be really helpful if you can provision X, Y, and Z. We actually had a meeting about it. We're launching that. So it's continuing to evolve based on the feedback of our school leaders, but we're taking those best practices from last year and replicating them on a larger scale this year.
But there is a cost of some of that work, those resources?
I think just, it's a deployment of human resource capital, and when you have a very limited amount of human resource capital, for example, you have one secondary ELA specialist that supports six through 12, they can't be everywhere all the time, right? So where can we deploy those efforts intentionally around where we know the schools need it the most, and what we're hearing from our school leadership team in terms of what they need?
So we have six of these schools, three of them are Title I, and three of them are not. Is there a way maybe we could add some funding to those schools to help offset or give them the extra push or help that the Title I school gets that they would not? Is that worth considering?
What I can speak to is the fact that we have already had conversations. There's actually other resources being deployed to these There's actually other resources being deployed to these schools beyond just federal funding. So, um, there are specific examples where we are using, uh, Title II funds for specific coaches at those schools to be able to support. We're also looking at our DSSF funding and what additional instructional resources. The one thing that I do want to point out is that putting money towards the situation isn't necessarily a solve. We need to have conversations and dialogue with the school communities and the school leaders and ask them what it is that they need to be successful. And then we are working and bringing that back to our teams to be able to have conversations around what can we fund and what can be provisioned? Um, and up until today, there was actually a resource that we ended up purchasing for one of our schools that needed it based on their school improvement plan and the conversations that we've had in these meetings.
Which is great. I appreciate the coordination, but again, if there's something the board can do to try to make a difference, bring it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandage?
So I didn't want to bring up a point without getting you, giving you the ability to tell people where they can make public comments.
So the Engage page will go live on their school website. It is the same platform that we used last year during realignment. So all of our families will have the opportunity to have and share comments. Um, we will also work with our school leaders to send out communication via Parent Square so that they are aware of where they can post the comments. The nice thing about the Engage page and working with our communications team is that we actually can see those comments as well. So when we come to present to you on November 12th, we will have also seen the comments that go to the schools so that we can give you a more accurate depiction of what feedback, questions, comments that we've received. Um, and ideally we'll notify you of any of those ahead of time, um, so that you're aware of them prior to our November 12th meeting.
And what's DSSF?
Disadvantaged Student Funding. So that is funding that we receive at the state level. Thank you for sharing the acronym, um, that we receive at the state level. And that is actually allotted based on the per pupil expenditure of students that are not performing at proficiency. This, so the state is able to provide a little bit of additional funding for us to be able to support with those students that have not yet met proficiency on end of grade or end of course testing.
Okay, I think that's all the questions. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to 11.03, our program choice updates with Ms. Reeves.
Stay up here. Thank you for having me. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board and Dr. Kipiki. I am proud this evening to come to you tonight with some program choice updates. Um, it has definitely been a very busy fall season with a lot of very exciting things happening in the world of program choice. So I always like to begin our presentations in rooting us back in the why program choice exists. And this is specifically around our board policy, um, 4154, which is really intentionally drawing to have our programs exist to draw a diverse group of students from around Cabarrus County schools to concentrate on a given theme or emphasis. I'd be remiss not to mention the fact that we have multiple schools that have moved off of the low performing schools designation status that are program choice. And so our intentionality is that we're placing programs in schools to diversify the student population, promote parental engagement and really increase student achievement for all students in those schools. And that is continuing to be our vision as we move forward. Uh, it is mentioned in specifically their district strategic plan in Destination 2025. And as I shared this evening, it will be a key integral component of our programmatic review as we move forward. So, um, for those that may not be aware, we have 16 choice programs in Cabarrus County schools that we are incredibly proud of, uh, many of which are not only when Dr. Kipiki speaks of being the best in the state, but the best in the nation, have received national designations for their work in their programmatic theming areas, including Interback Laureate, STEM, dual language Spanish, dual language Mandarin, fine arts. Um, we have our Virtual Academy, three early colleges and nine CTE career academies. Um, there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into all of these programs and we have phenomenal staff that advocate, um, and support in these areas and make these phenomenal opportunities for the students across Cabarrus County schools. And so as we continue to talk about continuous improvement, one of the things that we want to be really intentional about is a community that continues to grow. And as we have different priorities as it relates to academic and growth measures that we know are critical components of student success, we are continuing to evaluate programmatic theming. One of the things that we want to be very intentional about is when we talk about programmatic review, we don't want our stakeholders to get nervous that they're going to review a program, uh, remove a program. We want it to be a part of our practice that we are always wanting to get better. And so in many instances, programmatic review simply means engaging with stakeholders in that program and figuring out what resources do you need to be better? What's working? What's not working? And how do we make sure that we're intentional at the district level of being able to provide those supports for our schools? And so this year, um, in early October, we started actually our program choice road shows, which you may have heard about. Historically in the past, we've done a lot of different models, but one of the things that we want to make sure that we're intentional about is for those students that can't attend this Thursday's Futures Fair, we want to ensure that every rising ninth grade student has access and opportunities to all of the programmatic themes across our county. And so as a result, uh, we took our programs in our schools on the road. They attended every middle school. Um, sometimes they were going to multiple middle schools a day, but that ensured that we gave every student in this county the opportunity to see all the amazing programmatic themes and most importantly, what career opportunities might be available to them when they graduate, um, across our stages in just a few short years. Additionally, on October 17th, which is this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have our Futures Fair, um, which we are very, very proud of. It's a great way for our community to see all of the different programmatic theming that we have in Cabarrus County schools. And then launching October 17th through December 15th, our program choice application window opens. Um, and so this is a time for families to designate to us and notify us that they are interested in a potential program across the county. And so that window will remain open until December 15th. At that point, that window will close and then November, uh, February 3rd, parent notification will take place. Uh, one of the things that I did want to outline here is that in the month of November, we will actually be launching, launching a program choice family engagement survey. I want to be very intentional that this survey while is, speaks to program choice, we are actually going to be launching it for all of our families because we may potentially have families that may have input on our programmatic theming. Um, and as I've shared before, we, uh, fund these programs locally and so we feel very strongly that all families need to have an investment in, in a say in the programmatic themes that we offer. Additionally, um, that has an opportunity for us to capture additional feedback that we may not always receive. So I just wanted to share here, um, a couple of the photos of our program choice road show. Um, I think some of the faces, including the bottom photo with the, the child smiling with the firefighter helmet, just says it all, right? This is our why. This is the work. Um, and to see all of these students and how excited they were about the programmatic themes and academies in our district, um, that's what we want for the future of Cabarrus County and certainly, uh, raising up the next generation to not only have jobs but have careers that they are passionate about, that they get up and they're excited to go to every day. That's, that's the real work of the reason we're here. Um, and we've received great feedback from the schools that this was just a tremendous event. Um, additionally, we, we shared with the students, um, obviously we wanted to encourage them to have their families come out on October 17th, um, so that they could actually come see the programmatic themings for themselves as well as engage and ask any questions that they may have. Uh, I also do want to share that it's not just about program choice. We also have the college fair, the career fair and the military fair during this time. So it is a huge event for our, our entire community. Um, and it really helps connect not only the pathway within program choice, but future careers in, in Cabarrus County and beyond, as well as post-secondary opportunities for schools for all of our students. So just a little bit about the logistics that I did want to highlight, um, specifically as it relates to when our window does open, how do I apply? Because we get a lot of questions from our families, um, and we yield and vet a lot of, of, a lot of phone calls and emails during this season. And so our application is actually available and it will launch live on our, our webpage. Um, we will also be working with the communications team to, to share out this information so that families know there is just a button, you click, how do I apply? Um, it is in the same scribbles platform as all other registrations. So, um, it's a pretty streamlined process for our families. Um, and so that is where they will intend on denoting their interest in a programmatic theme prior to December 15th. Um, and so we are going to continue to push out communication in that regard. And then as I shared in November, uh, we will be continuing our programmatic evaluation. And again, this does not mean that programs are necessarily going away. It just means that we are trying to continuously improve and get better. And so this includes having stakeholder feedback surveys. Um, we're also looking specifically at student performance, demographic, application and enrollment data, um, as well as curriculum and resource needs. So the other thing that we want to intentionally be looking at is the monitoring of the interest of the program. So as we have these windows open, we'll be closely monitoring the enrollment pathways and what's interesting to our families and community members so that we can be intentional about moving forward. Um, our goal is that we will have, launch our survey in November, um, and then we will be coming back to the board to share those survey results and programmatic review just as we have in the past. And that is specifically outlined in Destination 2025 is a key objective for us. So as I shared, there's a lot happening in the world of program choice, but a lot of really exciting and amazing work. And I'm just super grateful for our school leadership as well as our teachers because I always say, our programs are only as good as the amazing educators in front of our kids every day. And we certainly are blessed to have a tremendous workforce that is committed to supporting our children. And so I just want to thank them very much. So with that being said, are there any questions?
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for all of that. And again, it's just because we're looking at it doesn't mean we're getting rid of it. That's very important. I know parents ask me all the time, they get very nervous about the program that they have at their school. I just want to say thank you. I, I'm excited to see that you're going to, uh, offer engagement about program choice for the entire district because as we know, it, we say it's a choice, but the truth is, is if you can't get your kid to and from school, that's not a choice. You, you have to do the homeschool because they're getting on the bus and that's all you can do. So I think it's important for fam, in some programs, there is hub stops, there are alternatives. But I, I think parents, sometimes we make decisions because we just think it's, we can't do it. So it's important, um, to make sure that everyone's fully informed about what's out there. And then also if, what, what's your demand? What, what is the demand in this community for certain programs? Are you not applying because you can't, you can't swing it? You just, your schedule's not gonna make it or not. So would love to hear people's feedback for that. So I really appreciate that you're not just talking to the parents or the kids that make it, because some, also not everybody makes it because it's a lottery at certain points. So, um, everybody deserves a voice. So I really appreciate that. I'm excited about the fair. I think it's a great, um, opportunity. I'm excited, I'm, I'm glad you did the road show. Um, I also noticed on our socials, uh, media that, uh, we're gonna, there's gonna be something for rising kindergarteners to learn about, um, what programs exist at, at the school. So that's great. That same thing, if you've got kids out in the community, you're probably, if you've got a four-year-old, you might not be watching this meeting tonight, but spread the word, people. We need your help to make sure that people know what's out there. And, um, but I would just, and this is my feedback, uh, is, uh, I had a question from a parent the other day at an event and she, their kids are gonna be rising sixth graders. So that's, they're sort of in between middle school, it's a tough time, right? I think that those, because they're all going, well, at least with language, they're going to Roberta Road. There's a lot of questions about Roberta Road. So if we could do something special for those kids, and I don't know if that's, even Zoom, I mean, I know we try to move away from that because we don't need to be there, but I know my daughter went through the Zoom when she was a rising eighth grader and that was enough to get her hooked on the idea of going to early college. So if there's something that we can do to give information, because we do lose kids from, going from fifth to sixth. So, um, giving them the same thing, information, we're, we're focused on the littles. We got the eighth graders going to high school. Let's make sure we don't lose some kids going from elementary to middle school. And I'm, and I'm guessing, right, that there are some, I'm talking a lot, I apologize. But, um, there are opportunities that even if you didn't do it in elementary, you could do it in middle.
Absolutely.
So the, uh, uh, there's still an opportunity. Okay.
Ms. Sandage?
So thanks for the information. I'm really excited about the fair. Um, I am hoping to take my daughter there as well. Um, I had a question specifically about, I am also hearing about the anxiety, um, trying to figure out which programs will continue. Is there a timeframe that we put out there that we will have had that process completed?
So one of the things that I will say is that there is no intentionality in dissolving any programs. So I, I specifically speak to people and say, it's program choice, not school choice. So there may be an instance where we are dissolving a program at a school, but it doesn't mean that programmatic theming is going away. It just may mean that we are transitioning a program from one school to another, um, obviously knowing that we're intentionally trying to provide access to all of the students that we serve. So at this point in time, there is not going to be a program that is going to dissolve. However, there may be an instance where we decide that we are oversaturated in a program and we need to make some transitional adjustments. But obviously all of that would be notified before the parent notification if that decision was made. Everything else is going to be specifically on input for future planning.
So to be, and to, to kind of go a little further on, to be clear. So some of this is to look at the demographics, the application, enrollments and what, what programs are receiving the appropriate interest and attendance. There's also the question of the transportation, making sure that all kids can access this because that is one of the problems of program choice. We're not looking to eliminate anything, but that doesn't mean we won't come back in the spring and say, hey, you know what? We did our survey, we looked at the data, we looked at the history of the programming. Doesn't make sense to continue program A or program B here. So I don't want to get anybody's anxieties off, but I also don't want to mislead anybody either. I mean, there is a huge financial component to this that we have to be cognizant of as well. So that's why we want to do a deep dive into this and say, okay, where, where is this working very well? Where is it being very efficient? Where are most of the kids applying? Are we making this accessible to all students across the district? That probably is our biggest problem, that it's not accessible to everybody. Um, so the survey will tell us a lot as we take our time to look over a lot of the information. We'll come back to you again in the spring with further recommendations as to how this program should look as we move forward. So you will see some changes. We're not looking to eliminate anything. What those changes are right now is to really say. Uh, but I don't want to mislead you and think, okay, everything's fine and hunky dory. It's not. We definitely have an, an equity problem because it's not all kids can get access to this. We have a transportation issue because not everybody can get the transportation. And, you know, remind everyone about the hub stop issue we had. So, so these are the things that you've all brought up, some of our public comment has brought up, Sarah and her team have brought up. So these are things we're trying to look at this year. Okay?
So spring, we'll get something in front of us.
Yeah. Early spring, we'll be coming back to you again with some recommendations.
Thank you.
Mr. Floyd?
So much to say. First of all, thank you. We already met this week in between all my smiling. I came by to speak with you and, uh, and we talked about this. So I want to talk about it now in front of everybody. So we talk about equity a lot. And first of all, I love program choice. There was a, I was one of the first program choice teachers in Cabarrus County. And I say that to, to say that I also understand there's an unintended impact of it. And when we use the word equity a lot, what we don't think about is who gets left behind and where do they go? What happens to the schools that get left behind? So I'm speaking specifically about Concord Middle School. It's underutilized, not because we don't have the kids to go there, but because everybody with any means, program choices their way right around, right on that exit ramp, and with any means, program choices our way right around, right on that exit ramp, and then they get back on it afterwards and go back to Concord High School, okay? Every kid in my neighborhood goes to J. and Fries. I live in Concord Middle District. I don't know any kids, I'm sure there may be, but I don't know any of them that go to Central Cabarrus High School. If you walk around, and I have spent a good amount of time in Concord Middle School, it feels like we've decimated it, and it feels like it's resegregated in a lot of ways because of the opportunity of people who are able to take that flight to J. and Fries and go around. So it's either flight, or it's the STEM. And there's a good argument that it could, it could be both. Everybody loves STEM. STEM's been one of the best things that happened to this in every school district. So instead of thinking about what do we take away to make that better, what about what can we add to make it better? So if we were to make Concord Middle a STEM school, what would that look like? And that could fit, we talk a lot about feeder patterns in our realignment. I mean, there is no feeder pattern right now. If you take, when you factor in program choice in middle schools, there's no such thing as a feeder pattern. People are picking and choosing, like private schools, if they got enough money for gas. And so could we look at that? What would it look like? And how can we get the ball rolling on that?
So some of the early indicators are some of the things you've talked about. You bring up a point that we have discussed and talked about, specifically Concord Middle School, and some of the issues we've observed over the last few years there. So I'll reiterate what I said. So what I probably should say too, the review could include addition of programs to some schools. And to be very frank with you, Concord Middle School is one of the schools we're looking at adding programming to, to address some of the issues there. So we're taking, as I said, a deep dive, but your, your point is well, well heard and we understand it, and that's one of the things we're all looking at. So it's not, again, I'm not saying eliminate, but it could be adding, it could be moving programs, could be better addressing the demographic look of it. So it's going to be a very expansive look, and I think you'll, you'll see some recommendations that I know Sarah and I have talked about already. As recently as last week, we discussed a lot of the issues with the middle schools in general, with some specific conversation around Concord Middle School and how we can improve some of the programming there. I think you'll definitely see some recommendations coming your way in the spring.
All right. Now, I want to elaborate, I know it's getting ready to happen on Facebook. I'm not saying everybody that program choices away from Concord Middle is a bad person or anything like, it's just what everybody does. And if you ask, by walking, I take my trash out to the street, and I ask my neighbors, hey, so what made y'all decide to go to Fries? Well, everybody else was, we didn't want to be the only person to not do it. Sometimes it's yes, STEM is great, hey, we love it when we're there, Fries does a phenomenal job. But it has just become an unintended cultural consequence that we have, have created, and an entire school is getting hurt. I mean, they're less than 50% capacity, and we talk about performance and all that stuff. I mean, they, they're struggling, and they could be great.
And again, these are some of the problems, you highlight some of the problems that we are definitely, was, which you highlight some of the problems and some of the challenges that we've been facing over the last couple of years that have been, that have risen, that we, well, if you remember last year, we started to realign, we said, give us a year on this, because we can't do both. But this is the year that we wanted to do the evaluation on the program and make sure that we come back with you with solid recommendations to improve the offerings, make sure we get it right from a demographic standpoint, a location standpoint, a program standpoint, and a school standpoint, in the sense of some of the things you brought up, Mr. Floyd, that we're definitely aware of and addressing.
Thanks, and we'll keep talking more about it.
Please do.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I think, again, it goes back to the policy, board policy forty-one fifty-four, and that's, if it needs a program there, then that's something that we ought to be targeting. Both my kids went to Concord Middle, both my kids went to Concord High. So staff there is excellent. But again, the demographics do have, have an issue there. And we are addressing that with the previous report that we had. So I think program choice is important. I think it sets us apart here in Cabarrus County Schools from other districts. So I do think we need to keep that on top, top of mind, and it does set us, we're trying to be a top district. Program choice is one of those reasons people want to come here.
Ms. Escobar.
I just want to remind people, just for history, I know Concord Middle had IB, and that went away. So just when you're looking at it, you know, again, looking at the survey and looking at demand, what would, what do people want? Do you want Spanish? Do you want Mandarin? Do you want IB? I can't say we're going to give it to you, but I just, what, what, if it's, if you're cool with going to Fries for STEM, maybe STEM's not the solution to counterbalance it, but I don't know what, what would help. So it just encourage people who are listening, who care, who are affected by this, to, to speak up, let us know, because this is the time where we're, we're looking at it, we're studying it, we're concerned about it, we're aware of it. And if you're not Concord Middle and you're at another school, and you're saying, well, I want this, or I want, again, this is your time to let us know what you're thinking.
Mr. Treadaway.
An analogy that comes to mind is that when I was interviewing, say, a teacher that was currently at a different school or a different system, in our conversation, I always had the question in the back of my mind, is this applicant running to us or running from where they are right now? Our program choice was to have our students run to a program, and the vast majority of our parents and our students are doing just that. And what we're saying is, we have some that have used program choice to run from something, and we need to fix that.
Ms. Sandich.
I just want to give a kudos to Concord Middle School. Both my kids went there, and teachers and educators that are in that building, I wouldn't take anything away from what we're talking about right now. I just think that we're saying, we want to be able to support that school just as much as we support all of our schools. So again, all the educators at Concord Middle, please hear me saying, I love what you have done and given to my children. So don't, please don't take any of that away from what we're talking about.
Mr. Floyd.
Yes, thank you. And let me clarify that too, because again, I know where this is going to, that is, I went to Concord Middle. I'm in there all the time. I love those teachers, I love those students, I love that school. I am in no way saying anything about that. I am saying, how can we support them and how do we not take away from them? And this, as a particular example, but thank you for pointing that out, everybody, because that's, I don't want that taken the wrong way. Luckily, I know everybody there, I don't think they, they know me well enough not to take it that way, but the Facebook comments are going to get lit, so.
And again, to the board, to the public, and everyone that spoke, speaking, saying this, that's just one example. It's an extensive look at program choice across the county. It's not just Concord Middle School, it's every school in the county. How can we deliver a better program choice that's robust and equitable to all schools across the county? That's what we're looking at. That was just one example that we used. And I would reiterate what Mrs. Sandich said, Concord Middle School is a fantastic school with great teachers. That was just one example we used to say, how can we support that school in a more, in a more efficient way to make sure that we're giving those kids all the same equitable experiences that all the other schools are receiving as well. But it will be an extensive look at all schools throughout the entire county and do an evaluation on all the programs.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. Okay, we've got some, okay, we'll move to twelve point zero one, our consent agenda. And there are a lot of things on here. We've got some policies and things that we did at our last meeting. So I'm going to call for a motion for us to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The consent agenda has been approved. So we're going to go to our action items. We are going to thirteen point zero one, our fund balance appropriation for the Apple lease.
Let me turn my mic on instead. I want to go over a number of different items that were presented at the last board meeting about a week ago, some of which have now moved on to the action items. I want to start with a potential use of fund balance for the appropriation of $700,000 to cover the net cost of the new Apple lease that was approved by the board of the June twenty-fourth meeting of this year. In this memo, I've kind of walked down the cost of the lease, including the gross cost. There was a small credit memo that Apple sent our way. You see the net lease payment for this year. We have estimated sales of the old Apple devices that we are selling off at just under $400,000. I did attach to the document the three different quotes that we received, that is the highest of the three. I do have about $100,000 exactly left in the budget line item for leases, so that brings the net price down to $675 and some change. You did see on there, I've added back in a contingency related to the resale. That's because that resale is slightly subjective in terms of they have to make a determination of what the condition of the device is. Obviously, there's a number of devices that are involved in this transaction, whether a device grades as an A, or a B, or a C, or a D in terms of the resale. It's just some, some cold comfort around, we feel like that's a good number that we should be able to get. Lead you with a net fund balance appropriation of $700,000 to support this first year of the lease. I will be, in full disclosure, this is an enabler for the next two items on the agenda, that if we're able to successfully do this, the next two items come into play. If we're not able to successfully move forward with this, the next two items should probably be tabled. Happy to take questions.
Mr. Walter.
Okay, you just mentioned the key thing, this is year one of a commitment for four years?
Correct.
So how do we pay for it going forward?
I think that's a question that we go into for the funding we're asked from the county, to make sure they understand that these computers are important to us. As you may have probably heard me say a number of times, we were not funded in any way for computers in the current budget cycle.
So have we already committed to this lease? Have we signed it, or we have not?
We have signed it.
So we've already signed it, so we're, we've got to go forward with it.
That would be my interpretation.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Mr. Floyd.
So just, that's a very good point, and I hope everybody's paying attention to it. This is a Band-Aid. This isn't a solution to that problem. This is something that probably seems when we do our budget request, when people are looking at, like maybe a frill, or a fluff item, or expense, or a want. This is something that's vital to what we're doing in schools, and this is what it costs. And if we don't get it, we got to come up with it somewhere. And that's, phenomenal job finding a fix for this year. I just hope everybody understands next year, how important this is, as we go into that budget discussion next year.
Okay, Ms. Sandich.
Can you just clarify how this has traditionally been funded, so that people are aware of that?
Well, there's two different ways that you can do computer purchases, right? One is a straight-out purchase. We'll be actually back here in November, is the intent to come and talk with you about a potential purchase of Chromebooks worth about $1.3 million. The other way that you can do it is you can lease the devices over a certain period of time. This one became particularly attractive to us because Apple as a company has a lot of cash on their balance sheet right now that they're not utilizing. So they are pumping back cash and effectively buying down the interest rate on these leases to what is effectively a zero interest rate. So in effect, it has the same dollar in the transaction as if we did buy them and just made the payments over four years. So that's the traditional way of looking at it. It's one or the other. You either structure a lease agreement over four years, or you do an outright purchase in the first year, and you pay the entire amount in the first year.
And have we traditionally paid this out of fund balance?
You've done both, in terms of the different transactions. This one just fortuitously happens to coincide with an available fund balance, which is why it's being presented this way.
Okay, and one last question, just so I understand. How long, I know you haven't been here for long, but how long has this been happening in various ways, so that we potentially take it out of fund balance? Does this go back to 2020? Does this go back to 20?
Well, I'll go back to the, the audit exhibits that were presented last week, where you were consuming fund balance to meet your budget, right? So in effect, although it's not, there's a direct relationship between the transaction, you were effectively consuming fund balance for three consecutive years to make your ends meet, so to speak, right? A portion of which was lease payments that were incorporated into the annual budgets.
Thank you for answering that for me.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, board members, I need a motion to approve the fund balance appropriation for Apple lease.
So move.
I need a second. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Fund balance appropriation is approved.
Excellent, thank you.
We'll move to thirteen point zero two, the incentive compensation structure for bus drivers.
All right, very good. So again, to recap what was presented at last week's meeting, we've come up with, we think, we hope, will be an effective strategy for both attracting and retaining bus drivers going forward. The proposed structure is that we, new driver would receive a $1,000 sign-on bonus sixty days after becoming a driver within the district. Existing drivers would receive a $1,000 retention bonus in January 2025, and that any driver working in 2425 that then returned for the 2526 year would also be paid a $1,000 retention bonus in September. We've also added an additional layer in terms of incentivizing other staff to make recommendations for folks that could become bus drivers for us, that if an employee refers someone that becomes a bus driver and stays at least, at least six months in that role, that employee would receive a $500 referral bonus. And I mentioned that that's something that we've seen done effectively in other districts and where I've worked. The estimated cost is based on thirty-five openings for existing drivers. That would include both the referral bonus, so assuming that every one of those thirty-five came through a referral, and it also assumes that all of our current drivers and leads are retained going forward. So in effect, this becomes a worst-case scenario of the maximum amount that we would pay out, structured over this program, would be $354,000. We do believe that we are able to recover a portion of that through our state submission, but there is a lag in terms of the way that you recover it. In other words, you will complete out the 2425 year with some of these costs embedded in that, which you turn into the state. The state then puts it through what they literally call a black box system to then determine how much money we receive for the 2526 year. So I can't tell you with any specificity how much of this 354,000 we would recover, but I do expect that we are able to recover a piece of it, but just not in the current fiscal year, which is why this proposal is in front of you now.
Any questions, Ms. Escobar?
So that third bullet, any employee that refers someone, so you do not have to be a bus driver to refer a bus driver.
You can live next door to somebody who wants to become a bus driver and earn the bonus that way. If you happen to be an existing school employee who happens to pull somebody in that becomes a bus driver, that's correct.
Yes, so I just, I just want to emphasize that, because we care about all of our staff. We want all of our staff to stay. We want everyone to be here. We're not able to give every single person a retention bonus.
Correct.
But if you know a bus driver, you can hop on this bus and get, get something. So I just want to stress that, that, that is a possibility. If you're custodian, if you're a teacher, if you're, any staff, please refer us some good bus drivers. We would really appreciate it.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, just a question on the retention bonus for next September, it's not in this year's budget, right?
Correct. So we would build that into next year's budget.
Again, but we got to get approval for the budget, or we'd have to go back and use fund balance again to cover that, or is that?
Well, my, my intent would be to ask for that and build it into our salary requirements for next year. And again, to better understand what the state will give us, because we can't actually use a retention bonus as part of the bus driver pay structure that the state will reimburse us for.
Okay, well, that's good. I mean, this is a worst-case scenario, and I think it's desperately needed to do something here to not only show our appreciation to our existing drivers, but try to incentivize them to get some referrals for us.
That's right.
Mr. Floyd.
Is there any on the new driver, $1,000 sign-on bonus, sixty days after they're in the role, any clawback on that or anything, if they, once, once that's paid, they got it, right?
Pretty much, yes.
All right. I think it's a great solution, since I've paid attention to bus driver vacancies, we've had no less than thirty-five, and everybody out there has no less than, I mean, it's critical everywhere. We got to do something. And all we hear from people is, y'all need to do something. Well, this is, this is something.
This is something.
I think there's enough bus drivers here that'll tell you, this is something. Thank you, guys, first of all. Not, not just for being here, but thank y'all for everything, all right? I'll tell you, other things that we can do to help them out is, as parents and citizens and Facebook account holders, give them grace. Give them grace, man. Give them patience, show some civility, and again, back to my previous point, get out of the Facebook comments and into the real world for a little bit. And these people are doing their dag on honest best. They are all great people. And I hear stories about people coming on buses and yelling, I mean, that is, if that, in five years, you're going to look back at yourself and just think, how could I be a person that could do something like that? Take a moment, take a breath before you do that, and be appreciative of these people, because they're getting our kids to and from where they need to be. And it might not look the way that we want it to look, because we want concierge, door-to-door, immediate push-button, get kids service, but it is happening, and it is happening safely. And we just, we appreciate you guys so much, and I hope that everybody will go do these things for you.
Ms. Sandich.
I don't know how I follow that, but what I, what I would like to ask is, let's just I don't know how I follow that, but what I would like to ask is, let's just say we get the 35 people that we're asking for. Are we ready to get them trained and up and ready to go? I know there were some issues with a trainer. Maybe we were down a trainer, but are we ready for that type of push?
I think I can say categorically, we'll find a way to make it happen.
Okay. The other thing that I was going to say, just to add to what Mr. Floyd just said, is, you know, I'm going to say this, this is the second time. We are not the enemy. When we work together and as a community, there is so much that we can accomplish. Instead of bringing us all of the complaints and the issues that you are facing, like, let's work together to figure out how we can solve them. Because at that point, our children get what our need, what they need, and our community as a whole will thrive. These bus drivers, our teachers are dealing with behaviors. And instead of fighting back and forth as adults, like, we need to be looking at what our kids are doing and working with that parent, that teacher, and that kid at the same time to fix the freaking problem, y'all. I'm telling you, this is hard stuff. And if we work together, we take a piece of the pie, and we fix the true root of the issue. Y'all, stop complaining, and like he just said, like, put your foot, put some skin in the game, and get out there and help us fix these issues. That's when kids get better. That's when they come back in our district and they work as teachers, and they have, and they enjoy what they do. Y'all, I'm just going to say, if we keep on fighting each other, nothing gets accomplished. Nothing. Our schools are going to continue to be low-performing. Our kids are going to continue to not get what they need. Mental health scores rise, suicide rates rise. We've got to fix the issues, y'all, and stop complaining. I'm done.
I'll just say amen. Okay, any other comments, Mr. Treadaway?
Yeah. Mr. Penn, I know exactly what you mean. You say this is worst-case scenario, but if we find 35 bus drivers, that's in my mind our best-case scenario. I think you agree with that. I just, we've heard a lot about pseudo-issues tonight. We spent a lot of time on that. This is a real issue that impacts our EC kids. We hear every day, we are in schools about especially our special-needs students that are late getting their dosage when they get home because they're having to wait for that EC bus. It impacts program choice. We've talked about that tonight. It impacts everything. It impacts breakfast in the morning. It just impacts everything. So this is important, and I enthusiastically advocate for this.
Okay, well, let's enthusiastically make a motion to improve the incentive compensation structure.
Your honor.
For bus drivers. Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye. Oh, Pam, so sorry about that. Okay, so all those in favor say aye. Opposed? The incentive is approved as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to 13.03, our athletic and fine arts proposed stipend increase.
So it's not my intent to go through the entire presentation that you've already seen back at the August 5 meeting. And for those that are listening online, you can go back and listen to the audio. The full presentation is also attached to this agenda item. I just want to hop to the last page, if we can do that, and bring that up on screen, where we costed everything out, and credit to Mr. Tyson and Mr. Tolbert for putting this together. I thought this was a pretty inventive way to think about what could be done going forward. And I've gone through the numbers along with my payroll team, and we tied out to the 456,000 you see before you here as what would be the structure going forward, which effectively would create additional steps in the existing tables and give a nod to those that are working within the middle schools within this space as well, right? So this is one where I know there's been a lot of board discussion about the length of time since this problem's been addressed. I think going on 15 years is not an overstatement of the issue. So again, now that we have the fund balance appropriation for $700,000, we can make this work in the current fiscal year. We can make the bus driver incentive work in the current fiscal year. And just acknowledging the fact that we'll have some work to do to make sure we have an appropriate level of funding going into next year. Now, I know there was some conversation around the communication around that, and my intent is if the board approves this tonight, it won't be a Phil Penn communication. I'll be working with the team in communications, the team in HR, to figure out what the right wording is to make sure that people understand we've identified funding for this year. We need to identify funding for next year. That's our next big thing, okay? Full transparency on that.
Any questions, Ms. Escobar?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for figuring out a way to try to make this happen. And I just want to say thank you to all the trusted adults who are there every day for our kids in these schools. It's hard. It's hard being a kid. And I just, I appreciate the love that they experience every day. And it's our bus drivers, it's these teachers, it's these teachers and other staff members who decide to be coaches, who are art teachers. They're the reason people come to school every day. And it's not us. It's them, and they deserve all our thanks.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I was going to, again, we've discussed STEM coaches as being a part of this at one point. How difficult is it to do that? I mean, I'd like to see the issue that was brought to us tonight addressed, and if it takes something like this.
So in the current year budget, we did create $85,000 of additional funding for the Vex Robotics program, the majority of which was targeted at coaching stipends. Roughly $48,000 of the $85,000 was targeted to coaching stipends. The other $37,000 was targeted at additional support for supplies. That was a stipend of $1,000 each for a head Vex coach and $500 for an assistant Vex coach. That's where the level of support that was requested wound up getting funded. So there actually is funding that we've created within the existing budget that's already been approved that provides some of that.
So the $1,500 debt, is that, how big of an increase is that?
$1,500. That's the first, maybe the first year they're getting it.
We were giving them something before, weren't we?
It was smaller. Is there recall? Yeah.
Okay.
It was less.
I'm glad to hear that, so thank you.
Okay, well, I think we got it.
Any other questions?
That was my question about the Vex Robotics. I think the issue was about finding a staff, and I don't know that it was tied to salary. But I'm sure we'll look into that. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lindsay?
So just real quick on the Vex Robotics piece, and it's okay if you don't have the information on this. I did get some information that our numbers are very low right now for signup on Vex Robotics. And so I do hope that that is something that we are going to look into and how to get these kids engaged with Vex Robotics this year because I know that it is just a wonderful program. And so I am concerned about the low enrollment numbers for our kids if the numbers that I received are accurate. That's all.
Mr. Floyd?
Me again, all right. So I want to make sure we emphasize that this is, we're making a commitment to take care of these folks. And I know there was a lot of discussion about it one time. The funding, where the money's coming from is one time. We're committing going forward to make this a part of our funding request, just like we just talked about. And I know there's a lot of different people in schools. We talk about the difference drivers make. We talk about the difference coaches make. There are so many people. To talk about these folks making a difference doesn't mean these other folks aren't out there making a difference. We are coming for you. We are fixing what we can, when we can, where we can, how we can, and we will come for you, okay? Or at least, maybe not we, there'll be a new board, but hopefully that board will come for you and not leave you behind. But the staff and the board is coming to help you, which we're doing everything that we can. And it's important that they hear that because I don't want, it's natural. When I was a teacher, you'd hear about somebody getting taken care of, and the first thing you hear is the 10 people that didn't, okay? It, you're not forgotten. You are not forgotten. We will do, we will be there. Thank you.
By my estimate, between the classifieds salary study, the two actions tonight, you've probably impacted upwards of 2,000 people.
That's incredible. That's doing work up here for those who are keeping score.
Okay, so, board members, I need a motion to approve the athletic and fine arts proposed stipend increase.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The stipend increase is approved as presented.
Madam Chair, before we transition to the next items, one additional thing to comment on. You may have remembered from the last week's presentation, there were three distinct items that we were recommending for use of fund balance, and I only presented one tonight. So if anybody's wondering in the public or on the board as to why, I'm working with Mr. Sane and Ms. Reeves on vetting out those additional items. I'll be putting together with them packages regarding those uses as well, not unlike the one that we presented tonight for the Apple Lease. So please expect to see that coming down the pike in November.
Thank you. So we'll go to 13.04, the budget resolution and adoption by our '24-'25.
Okay, so one important note, at our last meeting, which was on October 7, I had commented that the legislature was set to meet on October 9. They did, in fact, meet. The focus was on the aid package for Western North Carolina, as it should be, right? So there was no action taken on House Bill 10 on the veto that was in place on that. Based on what I read today, they are coming back into session on October 24. I don't know specifically if the intent is to take up House Bill 10, but I do make note of that, that they are coming back into session in about two weeks. And I am hopeful that at that time, they'll be addressing funding the ADM growth issue that is persistent for us. As I've stated before, it's worth somewhere between $2 and $3 million to us as a district, assuming that none of it gets prorated because of the state limitation on the funding. So just to recap, I know I presented this last week. We're currently showing a deficit in Fund 2, which is our local fund, of about $762,000. We did identify in Fund 8 that we overestimated the number of short-term contracts that we would need for one of our schools, CVA, to be specific. There is an opportunity to save upwards of $800,000 because of that. We will be moving things around to balance everything back out. So by the time you see this presentation in November in what will be Amendment Number 1, my hope is that we'll be able to balance budget across all four, excuse me, across all eight different funds that we have here. But for the moment, just to put a stake in the ground to start with, I'm asking for the board's approval on the budget resolution in front of you for the '24-'25 school year in the amount of just over $468 million.
Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing no questions, I call for a motion for us to approve the budget resolution and adoption for 2024-25.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The budget resolution is approved as presented.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move to 13.05, the proposed academic calendar with Mr. John Legrand. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Kupicki, Madam Chair. I want to, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Ward for her accurate description of the proposed draft for the 2025-26 traditional and early college calendars last week. We haven't received any questions over the past week from anyone, so I want to turn it back over to you for any further questions.
Any questions about the calendars, Ms. Sandage?
So can you help, I know there was a little bit of discussion, maybe a meeting or two ago, about how this has impacted, positively impacted our students. Can you speak to any of that, what we've seen as it relates to testing, what we've seen as it relates to behaviors, et cetera, with the continued approval of this early start calendar?
Yes, I certainly can. Thank you for that question. The, what we have seen academically is an increase primarily in the first semester, which ends now before the winter break. And that means our students don't have to come back after two weeks and take an exam on stuff that they have been, you know, the studies that they've had prior to that two-week break. We've also heard anecdotal information on, from parents and teachers alike that students really enjoy being finished as of the winter break and not carrying it over as you go into the new year and not studying and worrying about high-stake exams as they come back from the winter break. So it's good for their mental health and, I guess, relaxation over the break as well. All in all, the staff, I've talked to teacher assistants, teachers, secretaries, principals, assistant principals, central office staff. Everyone agrees they really like the setup of this calendar that we had this past year. For that reason, it's good for kids, it's good for academics, and it's good for our staff members as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yes, similarly, it also aligns with the community college, right, more so?
Yes.
It aligns with our fall sports better. Is that?
That's correct.
Those are other benefits to this. Again, I've always advocated for local control, what's best for our students. I know there's a North Carolina law that says when you start, when you don't, and how many days or whatever. But if we're looking at what's best for our students, let's look at some of those, we can look at some of those too. I'd be open to that. As far as days of instruction is what I was meaning.
Yes, and you touched on something there. It also aligns our early college calendar with our traditional calendar much more with this setup as well. And like I said, we saw about a 4% increase in our proficiency come up with, in this fall semester just by taking our tests prior to going on this break.
Mr. Floyd?
Those were two really good points, and I want to expand on them real quick. One, I believe I heard last week the fall scores were up, spring scores were kind of the same.
That's correct.
That's more evidence because nothing really changed for those spring students, but those fall students taking exams after the break, that clearly makes a difference from one semester to another. So I want to make sure everybody understands that, and I'm glad you brought that up. Also, I mean, local control, at the end of the day, we're out of compliance, and I don't like being out of compliance. I say that because there's a lot of people that could reach out and call their representatives and ask them for local control over the calendar. This is why it matters. It's good for kids. I understand that that takes away from tourism money for VRBOs, and frankly, I'm not on the board of VRBO. I'm on the board of education. I don't care. I care about what's good for kids. So I hope that a lot of you do too, and you'd be willing to call and lobby for that because even though we're doing it, and even though it seems like it's going to be fine, it's not good that we're doing this out of compliance. We need to get that rule changed, and that's really important.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Treadaway?
Yeah. First of all, I've been on this calendar committee for years, not as a board member, but as a staff member. And Dr. Ward did a great job of talking about to get this, you have to give up that. You know, there's only so many days. And also, the restrictions beyond the start date, there are just so many things that restrict the calendar options. And then you've got elementary schools that want this in their calendar, the secondary schools prefer the workdays at different places. But I just have to share, I am not a fan of early release days. As a practitioner in schools, I just, I am not a fan. I understand that it allows for professional development. But looking at last year, our early release days, the attendance, the number of absences was double. A corresponding day, in other words, if it was on a Friday, I looked at the previous Friday. We had twice as many students out on those days. And the same was true, not to as large an extent with our restart schools. If you've worked in a school, you know what a half-day's like. You're paying full price with utilities, transportation, and staffing, and you're not necessarily getting full instructional integrity. And also, I don't think they're family-friendly, especially to ours that have uncompromising work schedules. I think it puts a real hardship on them. And then if we have to have early release days, like this past weekend, a half-day on Friday and a full day on Monday, you're basically inviting families to take some time off. So I will, I know this calendar will pass, and I have no problem with that, but I will not be voting for it because I'm just not sure this is the best way. I think we have fallen into a little bit of habit of early release as being a given, and I would like for us to, going into next year, looking at the following year, look at options and see if there's something else. One other thing I will say too, we're starting on a Monday next year. That may be unavoidable because I know the restrictions that the committee has, and I appreciate the work they put into this. Starting school on a Monday, folks, is a long week of schedule adjustments and bus adjustments and everything else. So anyway, I had to share that.
Okay, board members, Ms. Sandage?
I'm just going to add, just for parents, my daughter asked me if she could miss school Friday because there was a half-day, and I told her absolutely not. So it depends on the parent, not necessarily something the school district could do. I told her absolutely not, so.
Okay, board members?
I have to respond to that if I could. Good for you, but some of our parents of elementary children don't have that option. No ones can pick them up. Nobody's at home. So I just want to, that's what I mean by being not family-friendly sometimes, is some just don't have the option. It's either you're there all day, or nobody's at home, so you've got to go to work with me or stay home or whatever. So that's what I'm referring to.
Ms. Escobar?
I just want to say thank you for your comments. I appreciate that and understanding them because not as a school, I've never been anything but a parent in a school. I appreciate that feedback. I will just say, I sat on the calendar committee, and I was not the only parent that was sitting on that calendar committee. So, Mr. Legrand, could you just explain who made up that and who was participating in these conversations? Because we did ask parents what was family-friendly and what wasn't, and that was part of the discussion.
That's correct. We had, we had parents from each level of school, elementary, middle, and high, on this commi- That's correct. We had, we had parents from each level of school, elementary, middle, and high, on this committee. And we went over the, the pros and the cons of the early dismissal. You know, when, of course, if you take a full day off for professional development, then it cuts back on your total days and your total hours. So like Mr. Tredaway was just alluding to, it's a give and take, you know, there's, there's pros and cons with each of those, and that's what was debated back and forth. And, and our, our parents, for the most part, understood that. I think there was, you know, as always, there's, there's some that, that agree and disagree, but overall, our, our, our parents and our staff both agreed that the half-days were the best way to go about having, building in time for professional development.
And, and I just wanted to add, the, the parents were every grade, but then we also had some EC parents as well, so we did try to make sure, I, I mean, at least on the committee, that as many people were represented as possible. Obviously, it's not the whole district, and there's going to be people who disagree, but I just, I did want to make a point that, that, that was something that we, we discussed. We might not have arrived at the best decision, but, but that was, there was conversation about it.
That's correct, and I want to add, this was not a, you know, a brief discussion, this was a five-part series, you know, over a series of afternoons. So we, it was, it was a lot of discussion, and, you know, very, very comprehensive discussion on, on this calendar. And I, I think we arrived at the best possible product that we could bring forward.
Okay, Board Members, I need a motion to approve the Academic Calendar as presented. Second. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The calendar is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to 13.06, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for Coltrane Web in Beverly Hills.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki. Last week, I presented to you the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment 1 for Coltrane Web Beverly Hills Replacement School Project. That amendment included the Building Demolition Package, the Structural and Miscellaneous Steel Package, and the Generator Equipment Package. Once again, pending the approved funding by the, by the county, we're requesting your approval of this amendment in the amount of $5,285,919. And I did not receive any questions during the week, so as Mr. Legrand said, I will turn it back over to you.
Ms. Lindsay?
I, I just have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so last week, you had mentioned that you, you guys were going to check back with the LGC and make sure that y'all, because I know that y'all communicate pretty regularly to make sure all the documentation and whatever they're requesting is on the move.
Yes, ma'am.
So have you confirmed with the LGC at this point that the information that, that they're going to need on November 12th is what, what we're going to provide them?
We have had the conversation, we're at a, a difference of agreement in what that material looks like, but yes, we have had that conversation.
Okay, that just, I'm sorry. So when you say a difference of what that looks like, I mean, they're the ones who are going to decide whether or not they approve this based on the criteria for what they're requesting.
We've had conversation with the staff, not with the commission members.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And I assume that they haven't said that they would suspend their rules and procedures that require of the permits that they've been asking for?
No, not at this time.
Okay, okay, so I, I'll just say that, obviously, I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote yes for this, because we are not going to do this until the LGC decides to approve or not. I just really, I, I will say this.
I will clarify, this is, you continue to say LGC approval, but it is just county. We're, we're looking as a board to, for the county for funding. That's, that's what we're looking for, not, yes, ultimately, the LGC is the body that oversees that, but we as a Board of Education, as a district, look to the county for that approved funding.
I understand that.
Okay.
I just, it does make me nervous, though, and I, and I truly hope that we don't go over this $50 million, because I know you said that that was work, worst-case scenario. And, and so I, I hope that that is not the case, because I'm not sure where we would get the funding from.
Understand.
For an overage. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Floyd?
To follow up that question, have the commission members got this information, that the staff has gotten as well? Because the last meeting, it sounded like they hadn't been given anything. So are we making sure that this information is making its way, its way to the decision-makers as well?
Yes, sir, it's my understanding that the information we provide at the request of the LGC through the county will make its way to the commission members in some form.
I'd like more than an understanding, I'd like to know that they got it, if we have to send it ourselves directly to them, because I think we had that understanding three meetings in a row, and it sounded like three meetings in a row, it didn't happen. So I'd, I'd really like to make sure we're diligent about that, reaching out to them directly with anything that they need as well, to make their decision, whatever it may be. So on the PGMP, is there a way that can be written so that when we're saying, hey, this will not go over 50? All right, and they want to know it won't go over 50, whatever number we've got on there, at any given time? If it does go over 50, which it looks like it's pretty sound, then it won't, but forget all that for a minute. If it does, is there a way to write that to say, all right, we won't ask you for more than 50, because we're going to either work that out, they're going to, the contractor's going to work it out, we're going to make it up elsewhere? Is that a possibility to make sure that everybody is satisfied to button that up?
Yes, the, the language within the agreement is written as such, so that the, the baseline that the preliminary GMP sets as a contract value, if you go through the formal bid process, and you bid out the 35, 36 scopes of work that are part of that process, and it does come in over what that pre-GMP was established at, then the language is written that you sit back down at the table as an owner, with the design team, and with your contractor, and you begin negotiating those individual bid packages that were either over or excessive in value that caused it to exceed the pre-GMP amount. You then negotiate those back down to where you fall within the approved funding as a part of the preliminary GMP.
Which I, I felt like was presented, I, I just, I feel like it got lost, or maybe I misunderstood, so I want to make sure that that's very, very clear, because it seems like one of the big sticking points was making sure with the GMP, that we actually put the G in the MP, and make sure that we're not going over that. That's a pretty big deal, to make sure that everybody's on board with that, it sounds like we're, we're on it. You know, there's a lot of discussion about go-bonds here. As a reminder, that's got to wait for an even-year ballot, if I'm not mistaken, then if it gets approved, because everybody's loving this stuff so much, we'll just assume it does, because a lot of times they do. If it does, then we're talking 2026 before it even gets approved, right?
Yes, sir.
And then we've got to start all over, all the stuff we've already done, all the things we're taking from R. Brown, all the work that's, all, gone, start from scratch. So we're not starting to go, we're starting back behind the start line again, right? Is that correct?
There is the risk of substantial changes within the codes that are written as a part of these schools, because they change every year.
So like, we saved a lot of money using plans from the old R. Brown to be, that's gone. How much was that again, do you remember?
It was close to $600,000.
So many hundred thousand dollars, okay, that's a lot. So we don't want, and not to mention escalation, I mean, we're talking 2026 approved, then you start over with your drawings and your bids and your RFPs, and, and, I mean, you're talking 2030 before we're, before we're walking in the classroom with that point, optimistically, okay? That stuff is going to cost more then, we all understand that, right? That's the way, you know, when my grandpappy went to the moving picture show, it cost a nickel. It doesn't cost a nickel anymore. Things will cost more in the future, we all understand that, if correct. Mr. Penn, am I describing that correct, like? Thank you very much. I'm not a learned man, but I try to sound like one. So it will cost more in 2030 than it costs in 2024, or '05, or '06, and as we keep kicking that can down the road. But that is a great, there's nothing wrong with that at all, other than the urgency that we have on this project, because we, if we reach a certain point here, we're going to be out of space and out of time. But there are projects on the 10-year plan that probably do have time for some of that, so if that's something we want to look at, maybe now would be a good time to start thinking about Central Cabarrus and Northwest Cabarrus and things like that. But I'm not hearing any talk about that, all I'm hearing is, is talk about, we got to, you know, this is wrong, stop this. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that too, that, that's something that could be talked about, and it would not be a bad thing to talk about. But we, we are where we are on this, and we, we got to go, Joe, I mean, we're, we're out of time. And if we want to switch gears, we can switch gears, but I just want to make sure everybody is very, very clear on that, thank you.
Ms. Escobar?
I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, because as you made it clear tonight, our responsibility is to ask the county, and then the county is, you're really helping the county in their presentation to the LGC. So I just want to remind people that you can give public comment to the LGC about how you feel about these projects. And we learned about that tonight, and I was on their website today, you can Google Local Government Commission Treasurer's Office, North Carolina, and they have a whole Transparency button, and you can hit, you can hit and give comments, and you can put in your name, and, and you can share. This meeting is in November, so we have time now. So if you're interested in talking about why you don't want Coltrane Web kids to sit in a old school for four years, that's really not really conducive to their learning, I would suggest you get online and explain that to them. Remember, Mr. Cohen is talking to staff of the LGC. Staff then makes a recommendation to these members. So they should be presented with the information, there's like two steps, but they also get to see the public comment that is made. So they are making decisions based on the information that we're providing. So I will vote in favor of this tonight, because I want you to have all the information that you need to try to give this argument to staff, who is then going to hopefully present it, even though they haven't the last two months, for us. We need these schools, we need these schools now. In fact, we probably needed them yesterday. It just takes two years to build, it's just the reality. We can't make that happen any faster. So please comment, please support this, please do everything within your power, I'm going to. Everything, most people on this board feel that way, and I hope that you and the public also feel that way too. Please support this. I, I just, I don't know how else to say it, I don't know what information you need to be convinced that we need schools. And we're going to need more, because guess what, we're growing. That doesn't go away just because you want it to, it, it, it's a real issue.
Mr. Walter?
I'm just going to say that, that in addition to schools, there are school projects and replacements and things that are all tied into this, so unless it can get broken up, I think one decision can affect our replacement and a lot of other things. I guess Kannapolis is also affected, is that?
I'm sorry?
Is Kannapolis also affected by this as well?
They are, they are within this application process, yes, sir.
So major impacts.
Ms. Sandage?
So I just want to make sure I understand correctly. First, let me say, thank you, you have been made to feel like you don't know what you're doing, and that is so unfair. I don't even want to be in your shoes. Just know that I see you and I appreciate what you do, you, and you can only do what you can do with what you have. I appreciate the clarification of your role here, so, you know, a lot of the frustration that we have probably directed somewhere else could have probably been going in the other direction and not to where it's been going. What I want to understand, though, is come November 12th, and I think that's been asked across, uh, down the line of this board, come November 12th, do you have, and I guess I'm asking too, does the county have what they need to get the LGC to approve what we have, what we are asking for? Do we feel like we have that at this point? Because it doesn't sound like that to me. So let me, let me rewind, okay? So on November 12th, you, you have to present, well, not you, the county has to present something to this entity for them to approve all of these things. They have maybe made it clear as to what they're looking for, and maybe not made it so clear in other areas. There is a disagreement between, it sounds like us and the county about what that looks like. When, is that fixed in order for us to be able to present on the 12th? I, I hope I'm making sense.
Yeah, and not to get terribly long-winded, we're clear on what they're asking for. That's, I don't think that that's at question here. What we're arguing is that the timeframe with which they have provided us to be able to give them that information was not adequate. That is just our position. They say that they, that we did have time, we just literally didn't, until we knew about the process change and how we secure our funding, it did not afford us enough time with the point we were at in these three capital projects to gather the information that they are asking for. And I told them that very clearly. I said, your process probably hasn't changed for however many years you've been doing whatever you're doing, and I respect that. But in the last seven and a half years that I've been here, this is a completely different process than I've ever been a part of, and we're trying to strategically provide with you the information that you want, to give you the guarantees, so that you can make that recommendation to the commission members, you know, and provide what we need and what they feel is adequate.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, you know, I, again, there, there's a, just a, there's, there's not a disagreement on what they're asking for, it's the timing on which they asked us to provide it for, that's the biggest disagreement.
That still doesn't tell.
And so to answer your question, will we provide to them what they're asking for, there, we're providing to them with, with documentation that is used at the state level by the state of North Carolina. It is a recognized contracting method, that we felt satisfied what they were asking for. And they don't feel that that is the case, because they say they operate differently than state construction versus the Treasurer's Office.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
It's not, it's not probably the answer you want, but it's all I can, it's all that I'm able to give them.
All right. Are you ready for us to vote on this?
Unless there's more questions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the GMP for Coltrane Web Beverly Hills.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, the GMP is approved as presented. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay, Board Members, 14.01, I call for a motion that this meeting be adjourned. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.